Testing, testing. All right. Good. Testing, testing. All right. Good. Testing, testing. All right. 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 Testing, testing.[588.01]
The schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2020 to 2021 was duly filed with the municipal clerk. Five, a copy of the schedule of regular meetings of the municipal council was mailed to any person who requested and paid the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act. Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome, sir.
Madam Clerk, will we take item number 27 before we proceed?
Yes, Mr. President. At this time, item number 27 on our non-consent agenda, item number 27 reads, "Resolution on Orange City of Patterson Employees of the Month of the Month of May 2021, sponsored by all members of the municipal council." City Council Resolution 21233.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Velez and second by Councilman Mendez.
And Mendez.
And Councilman Mendez. Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call, item number 27 for approval. Councilwoman Mancan.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just would like to say congratulations to all the employees for the month of April it is, and it's an honor to be able to do this. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davila?
Congratulations to the honorees. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to congratulate Mohammed Alam, Anna Council, Mahbub Ahmed, for being selected as employees of the month. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let me also congratulate all the employees of the month of April. Thank you all for your hard work and dedication for the city. My vote is yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
To our employees who work tirelessly, day in and day out, for the City of Patterson, you truly deserve this honor, and it's really an honor and a privilege to see that our directors, Director Dave Gilmore honoring someone from his department, Ms. Anna Council, our construction official Jerry LaBozo, Mohammed Alam, and then Mr. Ryan Foote, Mabib Ahmed. So congratulations, my vote is yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
I agree with all my colleagues' statement. Any department in the city will not shine if there will not be a teamwork. So I congratulate those that have been honored today, but those that have not been honored. Remember, you are a teamwork that make it happen to be able to have this individual be honored in the month of May. So congratulation, all of them, from my behalf, Councilwoman Velez. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Congratulations, continue the good work. Your good work translate to better services and to be, you know, to continue to be a great public servant. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number 27 is hereby adopted.
Council President?
At this time, we're going to have some presentations. Councilwoman, actually, Councilman Mendez, you go first, if you don't mind.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. And... Good evening, Patterson, council members. Today is a very special night because we have a group of students from the 2020 Leadership Class from the Patterson Police Authority League, and it's a great privilege for me to see you all here. And we're ready to recognize your hard work and your dedication throughout this class. I've been very impressed with all the dedication and the time that you're putting into this. I see the future Chief of Police, the future Fire Chief, and why now, the future Sheriff's Office in the City of Patterson. So I will continue with the citation. We have citation for all of you here. So when I mention your name, I want you to just pass by each council member, introduce yourself, and lining up in the front at the end, we're going to take a group picture, and we allow the parent to take a group picture, to take a picture. So I would like to start by calling Victor Minet, Lieutenant. Victor Minet. The next student is Sergeant Alexander Retamoso. The next student is Lieutenant Elizabeth Marchena. The next student is Sebastian Muñoz, Sergeant Sebastian Muñoz. The next student is Sergeant Ezequiel Barquero. The next student is Corporal Ashley Fermin. And it's extremely important to recognize the member of our community and leader that are supporting this institution, this organization. As you all could see, those are Patterson children that are performing extremely well. And it's an honor for me to call the Desafro American Veterans Commander, Chapter Number One, Manny Gonzalez. Do I have a recognition also as well, Manny? Come over, Manny. Also, I would like to call, now he is a United States Marine, he's the person in charge when it comes to training, and it's John Gonzalez, former cadet. And the last person that I'm going to call to finish with this presentation and this recognition is a person that has been working for so many years, dedicating his life to our children, to our youth, and we definitely have to recognize the effort and that dedication. And it's our great friend, August Fiola. Let's put our hands together for August. Thank you for your hard work and your dedication, August, and for what you do for our children.
Thank you, Councilman. You got it, baby. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for honoring my kids. These are all kids from our city, and hopefully that the newspaper will take a nice article and picture and show the rest of these other towns that we produce the best. Thank you. On top of your desk, the kids left you something. They picked it and they brought it down to you. So, thank you very much. And once again, Councilman and everybody else, including the mayor and everybody else, you're doing a great job for our kids.
Thank you, August. I want the kids to face the camera right here in the front, and I would like to allow the parent to come in and take a quick picture before, before we leave. Facing the camera, you can get right on here, they could move it. Their parent, they could come in to be able to take a picture. Thank you. Thank you, Council President, thank you. And to all the parents, congratulations for the outstanding job that you're doing for your children's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mendez?
So really quickly, but not to say that they deserve a quick response, we have, I believe they're in the hallway, I saw one of the honorees in the hallway, we just want to acknowledge the employees of the month for the month of May. Mohammed Alam, who works in UCC and Community Improvements, we have Ms. Anna Council from Community Improvements under the leadership of Director Gilmore, and Mahbub Ahmed, Administration Information Technology under Ryan Foote. At this time, if she will come forward, write to our secretary, you'll get the citation, and then you'll walk around and we'll fist bump. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Mendez? Thank you. I see two second ward residents on that list.
Are we ready to the payment of bills?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the payment of bills in the amount of seventeen million two hundred and three thousand five hundred and seventy, seventy-two dollars and seven cents. There is a payment to the county in the amount of twelve million five hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and nine dollars and eighty-two cents. I make the motion, Council President.
Do we have a second for payment of bills?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Mendez, second by Councilman Kalik. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Discussion, Council President.
Discussion, Councilman Jackson.
Can we outline whether or not there's any payments to the, to the garbage company?
There are no payments to it.
I'm sorry?
There are no payments, waste management payments.
Very good.
Council President?
Councilman Velez?
I know that, I believe the county, okay, it's the county, it's the portion of twelve million dollars five fifty-four, that's taxes that we have to pay them, right, correct?
What is that again? What was the question?
Taxes collected that we have to pay the county?
That's the bill from the county.
All right.
Yes.
I just want to aware, just want to aware the residents of Patterson, that's your taxes paying to the county. So if you live in a county road, if you need assistance on a county road, they have a nice bit of full freehold there, but you could call them and tell them what are your needs, making sure that they also listen to you pertaining county issues. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Is that Councilman Mancan?
Yes, it is.
Oh, Councilman Mancan.
I don't see the statutory expenditure under, under list. They usually have a separate breakdown sheet. Right, other.
It's four hundred and sixteen.
They usually have a breakdown, I don't see it on here.
Yeah, the person that usually does it was out, so...
Council President?
Councilwoman Davila?
Only one person does it?
The backup didn't do the, didn't do the thing.
Council President? Can he have, even a one person is doing it? Council President, can you give a highlight what involved the four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars?
The statutorys?
Yeah.
It's tax appeals.
Oh, tax appeals.
And sewer reimbursements.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry. Tax appeals and sewer reimbursements.
Okay, Council President, through the request, Council President, if it's possible, as the Chairman of the Statutory Agency, I would like, if it's possible, that when a expenditure, you know, is conferred in Statutory Agency, to send at least to the committee a report where it's spending at, how it's spent it or whatever, you know, what we paying. Because we want to know, you know, regularly we don't meet because they are busy in other situation, but that's really important to know in the payment of bills, if it's possible. Thank you.
What was the other besides tax appeals?
Sewer reimbursements. Sewer reimbursements.
Sewer?
Yeah, a couple people overpaid.
Also, Council President?
Council President?
Hold on a minute. So Councilman Velez and then Councilwoman Davila?
Yeah, now you say that, and it's really important, the statement that he just made, is, is overpayment, that people overpaid for the sewer?
Yes.
Okay, since, and I would make another request. If it's possible that you could give me a breakdown since the sewer utility got in place, how much we had to pay back because it was overpaid?
Because a person overpaid? A customer?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Davila?
Council President, to the CFO, does any of these monies reflect the, I called you earlier today about a concern of a resident who could not pay their taxes online, it said that they had already paid it, and she insisted that she had not paid. I brought it to your attention, and at that time you stated that, you know, there was some type of glitch a few months ago in the system?
In August, August 10th last year, there was a glitch. About two hundred people paid, and they got a, they, the system took like a double payment. So that was supposed to be, that was supposed to be fixed, it's not included in any of this. That was supposed to be fixed last year, there was about three that I saw that weren't, but we're going through the whole two hundred of them.
Okay, yeah, because I know with the one person that, that, that actually contacted me, it's because she could not pay online, and I know that you said that it was being reversed.
Tomorrow should be.
So I really would want, Council President, that there be a full, a full report on that to make sure, I don't know if there's any, what do you call them, the reconciliations, Council President?
Reconciliation.
Just want to make sure, because, you know, Mr. CFO, with all due respect, you say it should have been, but it wasn't. So if you found three, right, and it was supposed to be two hundred, how many more of those have not been rectified? So I just wanted to put that on record, Council President, thank you very much.
Council President?
So, so, yeah, Councilman Velez?
Thank you, Council President. CFO, and I'm a little bit concerned because, you know, as the Chair of Statutory Agents, I want to see more. Can you tell me, out of the four hundred sixteen, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven and thirty-three cents, had that been incrementing, increasing from the past month of past years? Have they been increasing this, this tax?
You mean the payments?
Yeah, yeah, now we have four hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred twenty, sorry, twelve million five hundred fifty-four.
So twelve million, yeah, twelve million is the county.
Okay, yeah. Can you tell me, can you tell me, when was the la, the last payment, how much was it?
I don't know.
Have you increasing the tax, county taxes?
Oh, county taxes?
Yeah.
I believe it was the same amount, twelve, three, sixty-eight.
Have, I, I, I don't want to go where I believe, I want to know if the taxes at the county have been increasing every time that we paid them?
Yes, every year, yes.
Well, can you give me a percentage?
Three percent.
Three percent. Thank you, Council President.
So, so, so for the record, I don't like to talk about this matter because I'm a county employee, but it is interesting. I passed this comment a long time ago, and every time I pass a comment from time to time, I say, see, I told you so. So we had a, a company here do revaluations for us. So the county have not increased their tax levy in three of the last four years, and I think we, the county have an increase in maybe two, two, two years in a row, I think, or three. I know, I know three, out of the four years, only three, only one year it went a minimal increase. And I often said that the way they break it down is, is sixteen municipalities, and the levy is the same, in a, in a perfect world, right, the sixteen towns just should pay the same. Nothing went up at all from the county. But the situation that we have is that the county allocates the bill in accordance to ratables from each municipalities. And remember what I said before, that this company was doing this reassessment for us on a yearly basis, and that was driving, you know, our, you know, our equalized valuation or ratables, and that, that's a great example right there. In the past, I remember, because I see it all the time, I'm the treasurer there, I used to see Wayne and Clifton pick up, every year after year, pick up a lot of the burden, until they, we got sued by a few municipalities for us to do an overall assessment.
Correct.
But the administration continued to say, we need to continue this program, this program is great, and my question was, if this program was so great, how come we're the only one out of the sixteen municipalities that continue to do yearly reassessments, right? And yearly assessments, whatever you want to call it, whatever the term is.
Correct.
So that is a great example. If the county's portion went up, it's either because we have a lot of new construction in comparison to other municipalities, and so on, but the county did not increase the tax, their tax levy for their budget, which just happened to got, you know, to get a, a bigger share of, of, of that bill.
So Council President?
Yes.
Now that you, you, you say that, it gives me the opportunity, I, I'm not going to send you as a messenger to the county because you represent the county as employee, but you represent the City of Patterson as an elected official. And I know that a lot of individuals out there are watching, especially the county employees that live in Patterson. So if you taking more money and getting more money from Patterson, and we are the third largest city of the state, please be compassionate with us. We need some repairs in the county roads, we need some service and more attention from the county to the city. And give us back in open space money, give us back in a lot of things that the residents of Patterson needs.
Yeah, as a BA.
And that's, and, and, and that's the BA, and I know the BHU have a good relation with the county, we relay this message to them. We need more assistance and more support from the county to the residents of Patterson that we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we done with the, the discussion on the payment of bills? Councilman Jackson?
Just want to make a brief comment on your, your analysis there. Well, it's, why is Patterson the only municipality out of sixteen, first and foremost? Because the individuals that are hired in other municipalities live in their city, and they, they have a different kind of a concern. They don't hire off, even if you look at the county and how the county is managed, they don't hire off third-party contractors that are paying three or four or ten times the value of certain construction projects and certain projects throughout countywide. You know, we're the only ones that's consistently making these poor decisions and hiring third-party companies. And, in fact, in fact, if you look at the company that actually, that we hired to do the job, you know, they had sixteen, seventeen-year-old, eighteen-year-old kids who supposedly have went around our community and did these evaluations. Lastly, I'll say this, Council President, if we're not careful, we all know that, you know, the values of the homes have been ballooned and have been escalated, and there's going to be an extreme, extremely tough market crash that I'm anticipating throughout the, you know, the, the near future. Since when has Patterson home values been at five hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars? And, you know, it's just getting, it's getting obsessive, and, you know, the saddest part is, when you, when you look at the, the amount of investors and, and nonprofits that have, that are just flocking to Patterson, the word is out, it's in, it's in Manhattan, it's all over the entire community, you know, state, that Patterson is the place to be, you can go there and double your money, and you better hurry up and do it now while the market's still hot, because they understand that it's only been so much that the market is going to be able to sustain. So just wanted to make, I mean, I'm sure all of us are aware of that, but we, we have to be willing to fight back, push back, and make sure that, you know, our, our residents are getting, you know, the best value possible, and stop allowing people to continue to make money off of us.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Jackson. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call for payment of bills, the amount of $17,203,572.07. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to comment. I've heard, I've worked tremendously with the county commissioners, and I've heard that they don't maintain some of the roads when the, when the snows, when we had our snowstorms, the only blacktop that you saw in the, in the city of Patterson were our county roads. If you look at, I'm looking at the county road list throughout Patterson right now, of the road system. Most of the county roads are paved. I know in the Sixth Ward, which probably has the most county roads, Getty Ave, Market, Market Street, Crooks Ave, Hazel Street, Main Street, Madison Ave, all were repaved in the last two or three years. So I, I'm going to commend the partnership that we have with the county. They're always a phone call away. They're not here to represent themselves, but they should get credit where credit's due. And I also know the administration, we want more bank for our buck, and we're discussing now that they can help us with our park system. Because there is a county park system that Patterson does not benefit from. There is no park system that the county assists. They're in discussions, and hopefully, that's more resources that the county could give us. And those are in discussions with the administration. This council passed a resolution to entertain that, so Patterson gets the best bank for their buck. So my vote is yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to say that, you know, I want to vote on the payment of bills, but I don't have the breakdown of the tax appeals and the sewer reimbursement. And I don't know if you can get that to me? You can get it now?
I can get it to you by the end of that.
Say that again?
But not now, in an hour.
Pass me for now. Pass, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Davila? Councilman Jackson?
Madam Clerk, can we arrange a cleanup in all six? I think something spilled. A lot of stuff on the floor over here. Yeah, all six. Need to clean up. My vote is no, Madam Clerk.
You have it?
Councilwoman Colleen? Councilwoman Mendeaux?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and just keeping in mind that we have a large payment doing, under the payment of bill to the county. We all definitely have to agree that there's a big difference with the amount of funding that the counties spend when it comes to open space in all the municipality. We have 60 municipality. Look at the difference when it comes to the park, the condition of the park, and the investment that they do in other municipality. And look at the amount of money that they invested here, being Patterson the third largest city in the state of New Jersey. There's got to be a conversation about that. We don't need to give out our park, and I want to make, I know we're in payment of bill. But in order for them to spend the money there, this is the county, this is the county seat, the largest city in the state of New Jersey. I'm definitely expecting the county to spend more money in our community. We don't take that away, that during the winter, when the winters come and they do a phenomenal job in the county road. We understand that. But when it comes to our park, when it comes to open space money, they do need to spend more money in our town. My vote is no.
Councilwoman Mims?
And so the payment of bills is not just for the county payment. There are other payments of bills that we have spent and invoices that need to be paid. And I do agree with Councilman Abdelaziz. The county does an amazing job, and Council President said it too. Over the last three years, the county, the county has not raised our municipal tax levy, which is an outstanding job when it comes to the taxpayers and the tax base. So with all the work that they do and the partnership that they do with open space funds, and anytime we reach out for assist, they are here to assist the great city of Patterson. That's not why I'm voting. I'm voting because there's a detailed list of other items on this bill that definitely need to be paid. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
I agree with Councilwoman Lisa Mins. And once again, I got to say, and, and my colleague stated that most likely all the county roads, especially in Market Street, but he didn't mention what part of Market Street. He only have three blocks from the Sixth Ward that belongs to the Sixth Ward. If you look Straight Street all the way down to East 31st Street, that's the county's road, it's Market Street, need to be paved. If you look Madison Avenue, okay, because I got to talk about my war now. If you look at Madison Avenue, all stretch from, from, from 20, from, what's the street? Main Street all the way down to Broadway need to be paved. I'm including, I'm including you too, Councilman. I'm including you to make sure that there's a lot of potholes there. But if you go to Madison Avenue between 20th Avenue and Ellison Street, you're going to see a lot of needs to get paved. You know, we agree that the county is doing their part. But we cannot be selective. County cannot be selective. Where did you go, not go? I see the county, uh, uh, when it's snow, when they had to pick up the snow on the Sixth Ward. But, you know, we need more from the county. And as Councilwomen say, we're here to be responsible that the pay, the bill be get paid, that we, we did the spending, and we need to be responsible on that. But one thing I got to say, and last, Sheriff's Presses, we need more enforcement from the Sheriff Department in the city of Patterson. Let's work cooperative, and let's make sure that they are teamwork with the city of Patterson, with the Patterson Police. So that's part of the county. So saying that, I agree in everything that my colleague has said, but I got to vote yes on this.
Council President?
Councilman Davila?
Madam Clerk?
She wants to change her, I think she wants to reconsider her vote.
No, actually, I want to, the reason, my apologies, you know, you hear the conversations, and they're specific to the county.
Councilwoman, hold on a minute. Are you ready? Yes, but, Madam Clerk?
It would be Councilwoman Cotton next.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
She passed earlier, so I have to go back to her now.
Did you get your work, your, the information? Yes.
Right.
Okay.
So go ahead, Councilman Cotton.
It's her turn now, Councilman.
I know when I talked until half a year, I know these tax appeals are from, the tax appeals from the state that we lose in state court with these tax appeals that we have to send it back to. So I understand that part. So Madam Clerk, with that being said, we have to pay. When we lose, we have to pay. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Cotton, I mean, Councilman Davila, you wanted to make a change?
Yes, so I know that I voted, you know, but hearing the conversations, it's almost like they're making it just about the county. The reason why I voted no is because I did not have the breakdown of the statutory expenses. And not having that in front of me, I'm voting on something that I don't know. But with that said, I also, you know, I'm really concerned with what I mentioned earlier about individuals and the issue with the quote-unquote glitch in the system and the double payments. And, you know, it just makes me wonder about those individuals that probably didn't open their mouth. This lady was very honest. She's like, oh, no, no, nobody's coming after me. I, I, I need to pay. Tell me how to pay. Tell me how to pay. And, you know, this was an online issue. Now, I think to the BA, to the CFO, I also want to know if that was just individuals who paid online that that occurred? Or was it something, you know, somebody coming in and paying?
It was just individuals that paid online on August 10th and August 11th.
So with that said, because I'm not making this about the county, you know, I, I don't like when we, you know, everyone is entitled to, to their opinion, and I see the good and I see the not-so-good, not to say the word bad, okay? Do we need more? Absolutely. And, you know, but, but at the end of the day, I think that for the most part, we do have a good relationship within the county. And I'd like to change my vote, because I don't want it to reflect that I'm not in support. And these monies do need to be paid out. So at this time, since there is no payroll, I am going to vote yes. So I changed my vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council President, you're next.
So I just want to say a few things. So, so council members, and this is not, and, you know, I've been here three years. You never see me defend my employer or anything, or even talk about anything to do with them, right? But all I want to say to my colleagues is, we're here to try to make things better and try to get things done, right? So we have to find ways. If one of your concerns is that you feel that the county needs to contribute more, or the district, we should use more of the resources also, working, you know, together with the district to get things done, then we have to put things in place so they could legally spend money in our community. So, so for example, the county can't just say, let me fix East Side Park. They can't do that. They cannot say, or any entity, forget the county, any entity cannot say, let me fix this, let me do this, right? Let me spend $10 million in City Hall. They cannot. So I applaud the council colleagues, and I'm not promoting the action of, you know, the city entering to any agreement, because legally I can't. But looking for ways to try to get things done, right? The residents out there don't care how their parks got fixed. They just want to see it fixed. They don't care how our roads got fixed. They just want to be able to drive without having to break the rim when they're driving on the road. They want their garbage to be picked up. They don't care how it gets picked up. They just want it picked up. So for us to come here, and don't take it as, as criticism, council colleagues, you know, I come in peace today. I just want to make sure that we get things done. We often say that the school district has like 57 plows or 37. We often talk, Councilwoman Mims, we talk all the time about having an agreement, a shared service agreement, that when there's a big snowstorm, we work something out that they could at least clean the, the roads and maybe open the parking lots for people to park in the parking lot, so we could clean the surrounding and maybe pick up the snow and, and make it nice like other towns. But guess what? We never finalize all those discussions. Now, open space, I leave it at this. Before I was a council member, I used to see articles all the time how, you know, council members complaining and some residents that the county was not given enough open space to the city. So I approached one of the freeholders, and I say, is this true? They said, Flavio, how could we give them money if they don't apply for it? That was back then. I'm not saying that's happening now. But even now, even now, we apply for things, and the things that we, that we apply for, the residents sometimes don't see. We applied for Hinchcliffe Stadium and the surrounding area, some parts that, you know. The bottom line is, we need to, to strategize what applications we submit to the county. That way, we, the residents could see the benefit right away. But that being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Payment of bills, the amount of $17,203,572.07 is hereby adopted.
So before we continue, one last thing. If, if some of us are concerned with some county roads that are still not paved, then let's ask the county to show, show us our, their capital plan to see when they're paving them. And if they're not in their list, then we ask them to put it on the list. That's how you get things done, not by complaining. So, Madam Clerk, let's do number...
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Jackson.
Can I make a suggestion or a request?
Sure.
With regard to some of the items, and I know tonight, we don't have an item on, on the agenda with regard to the garbage collection. But I would like to formally start a practice where we can break out various items, line items, individually. Because what we're doing now, sometimes there's a need for payroll and there's a need for other, other items. So the importance of some items are getting buried within the, within the, the payment of bills, and the, they can't be addressed individually. So very quickly with that, I just want to bring to you guys' attention, you all are aware that I requested a report from, with regard to the garbage company and how things were going. And I just want you guys to know, as well as the public to know, this is what I received, that as per your request, following procedures are followed. I'm not, I'm just going to paraphrase because I know I want to, you know, and with regard to time. DPW, the DPW office manages complaints received from city of Patterson at Patterson Plus, calls from residents, commercial owners, emails and text messages. Complaints, all complaints regarding solid waste collection are managed by DPW Code Enforcement, which we all know, Recycling Division, so on and so forth, shall be promptly attended to. Furthermore, goes on to say that we have been able to resolve all complaints received in our office with operational supervisor of suburban disposal incorporated with the, with required 24-hour period. Please be advised that we are unable to locate any reports showing liquidation, liquidated damages we were, we, we were ever able to impose to the contractor. So what that's basically saying is that whatever complaints that they, that they have received, they're, they've been resolved. And I, that's not the reflection that I get, and that's not the reflection that my residents are giving me. So furthermore, the next document that I received was the full agreement between the contract between the, the city and the garbage company. So to the residents, the, the, the bottom line is, there has not been any infractions to the garbage company. Basically, within the, within the terms of the contract, it states that if there's any infractions, we will bill them back. So we don't write them a ticket, but we will take care of the service and then charge them back. And it has not been done to date. So my suggestion, we should break out this item in a separate line item, as, as well as some of the payroll items that we have concerns about, so that when, when they need to be addressed, the council has the ability to address these matters, take action, and not have a detrimental condition, situation happen to, to the city employees and, and other, you know, groups in the city that need, that bills that need to get paid.
Thank you, Councilman. Cooperation counsel?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to address that issue briefly. It was brought to my attention earlier today and the administration's attention that the garbage disposal had missed some pickups last week based on an unexcused absence. The direction was immediately given to enforce the liquidated damages provision in the contract against the garbage disposal company that will result in many thousands of dollars in liquidated damages that we intend to subtract from their next payment. So it was, it was brought to our attention this morning. I sent an email immediately. And I also have a copy of the contract as well with me. And I made sure that they were aware, our colleagues were aware and the administration, that this needs to be pursued vigorously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman Jackson, for pointing that out. And, and this is what I mean of getting things done, right? So your persistence just saved the city. We don't want to save that money that way. We want the services to be provided. But if they're not, we need to enforce the contract. Let's continue, Madam Clerk, with number 28 and, let's do 28 and 29.
Did you say 28 and 29?
Yes, from the non-consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Next item in the non-consent agenda is item number 28. Item number 28 reads, "Resolution authorizing an award of contract to Real Estate Strategies, Inc., Ref Advisors for consultant, for consultant services to provide technical assistance for the City Hall funded programs, CDBG Home, Hapoa, and ESG for the Department of Community Development, RFP number 2021-
Some move.
-dash 32, Community Development Resolution 21234."
Some move.
Second.
Move by...
Councilwoman Davila.
I know you were strong voice, but I, I did as we want.
Second by Councilwoman Mims and Velez.
Council President?
You also seconded it?
No, no.
No, I, you don't want to yell.
So discussion?
Discussion, thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Just having the director here, so just for the view, clarification, can you go in detail about this legislation before we move on?
No, let me turn on the mic, I'm sorry.
Okay, this resolution is an RFP that was presented by the Purchasing Department to hire a public, I'm sorry, to hire a professional service consultant to do our action plan, our amendments to the action plan, the CAPER report, and all reports that it requires.
Council President? How much money has this, this Strategies Company, how, how much money have they saved us in the past?
Eight million.
Eight million?
Eight million.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just have a quick, my last question, Council President. How many, how many company participated on this bid?
Three.
Three?
Yeah.
So we... For the last two, they were the lowest bidder. Why we choose the, the highest one? I see 1, 120.40, 116.40, 71.60, and we choose Real Estate Strategy, Inc.
All three of those consultants we actually work with right now.
I'm sorry, direct, I, I can't hear you.
All three of those consultants we actually hired and work with right now. So the Sustainable Communities is a professional that, they actually can do the work, but they are more geared toward our homeowner rehab program. So their expertise is not as good or not as established as our RES advisors.
But correct me if I'm wrong, so we, we choosing the highest bidder in this?
We're choosing the most responsible bidder.
The highest and most responsible?
It may be the highest, but he is the most responsible bidder.
He is the highest based on the number. It's not maybe. He is the highest. But I, I'm, you know, I'm just, I will follow your lead and your experience based on the, on the scope of work that I've been hired to. But I'm just concerned about the number, that of the three, they are the highest bidder. But what is the difference between the three companies? You said that they are specifically on detail. Why we choosing this, this company instead of the other? You said that they are specifically on detail, why we choosing this company instead of the other two? Because of the scope of work, can you on detail?
They all can perform the scope of work. It's, the RES providers is currently working with us right now and has been the consultant for the last year. So has TDA. TDA was hired by HUD and given to us to fix an audit that RES provided the eight million dollar savings. So we're, obviously, we are keen to RES. Sustainable Communities actually helps us with our homeowner rehab program. They do no, other than updating our plans, updating our, I'm sorry, our policy and procedures, that's all they do. RES does all of the underwriting for projects, for home, for RCA, for CDBG construction. TDA has kind of helped us navigate all of the nuances for the COVID cares funds. So they're kind of done. They're not in, they're not active right now. They only have a little bit of money left over and they would love to have this contract, but they're not active right now. They were hired by HUD and their contract is over.
Understood.
Thank you, Councilman Mendez. Councilman Velez?
Okay, Madam Director, thank you, congratulations in your work you do and appointed by us to keep on working. I got a question. So this is paid by grants, correct?
All of this is paid by grants.
And it's only fifty-five thousand dollars, I believe so?
Uh, no. They have, RES currently has a fifty-five thousand dollar contract with us, which ends, I believe, in April. It ended April, the end of April.
So ends, ended, ended?
It ended.
April. So you went back out to RFP on it?
We did.
So how much is now to get paid?
This is no more than a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so in the past, I see here, past six years, I believe so, right?
Sorry?
I read a whereas.
You asked for a breakdown of what the agency did.
I know, but they've been working with us since when?
Two thousand fourteen, fifteen?
Correct. And they participate RFP up to fifty-five thousand?
Every year it's different. So in two thousand fourteen, I believe it was forty-five. And two thousand sixteen, I think it was thirty-five. And they didn't get two thousand eighteen. It was actually HUD that decided to hire TDA. So TDA, I think, got forty-three, forty-six, forty-six thousand.
So the scope of work from the previous years have been the same?
No. As we get more funding, the scope of work gets bigger.
Correct. So in other words, you state in the record that they already, how many millions they brought up to the city?
They saved us eight million.
Saved us?
Saving.
Saving, correct. That's what I want to clear. Save us eight million dollars. So they expected to expand up to a hundred thousand dollars?
Probably.
Yes?
Yes.
In how many years?
Probably within a year.
In a year?
We have three plans going on at the same time.
Okay. Can you mention those three plans?
Yes. It's twenty nineteen, that's the amended for the COVID cares, the twenty twenty, which is currently, and twenty-one is due in August.
Correct. The reason I'm doing this is because we want to know, we want to inform the public that this is the purpose that they're doing this. And sometime we approve things and they probably don't know really what's approved for, so that's why.
Council President?
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Just a reminder, Councilwoman Davila, just a reminder, last week in workshop, it was televised and a lot of this was already outlined and totally, it was articulated in a great bit of detail. So I just want to make that aware, that this is not new information. This week in workshop, we went over this in full detail, Councilwoman Davila.
So, Council President, I just thank you very much for giving me the floor. I actually was going to say exactly what you just said. So it's almost like we got the lepity going on over here because we did have a lengthy discussion. Our director left here, I think it was midnight. And so I'm just going to ask my colleagues that, you know, just be aware that our workshop meetings are being televised. And so, you know, let's not elongate today's meeting. Rightfully so, you have the right to ask the questions and, but if we're asking the same questions we asked at the workshop, you know, I think it's...
Was he here?
He was here.
No.
Oh, actually, you know what, Council, you know what, with that, okay. I am, I'm going to retract on that because you know what, Councilman Velez did leave early so he didn't have the benefit of the conversation. But please, let us move forward.
Correct, but also I receive a...
One second, Councilman Velez. Councilman Jackson first and then Councilman Velez.
Thank you, Council President. Director, very quickly, can you just outline, or maybe you can communicate moving forward via email, how did the process work during COVID for those applicants for the home?
She has delivered it. I actually sent it...
To everybody?
Yes.
It's on your desk.
It was on my desk.
And as I stated last week, as I stated last week in the workshop, there was a couple of agencies that did not accept the money. We have to go back out again and advertise the availability of these funds and we'll be back again asking you to award.
No, I'm referring to the residents who won, who were awarded the home renovation dollars. Is that in here as well?
No, that was, that had nothing to do with COVID. Remember, we shut COVID down, shut down that program during the COVID for a whole year.
I understand, but there were some families that were approved and through the process, they got caught in the middle of the shutdown and/or the services were partially rendered. There was, you know, from what I'm gathering, the information that I'm getting from some of the residents is that they were forced to take a certain contractor because of whatever transpired during COVID.
You called me last week and said that you were going to send me something in writing and that you wanted to speak to me. All the people that were approved prior to COVID or during COVID, they were contacted by Sustainable Communities as soon as they started back up again. And if they were, if their application expired, we had to do the process all over again. That's nothing that Sustainable Communities is requiring. That's a requirement from HUD. It only lasts six months. You have to do it all over again. You get to pick the contractor. We send out three bids. You get to bring the contractor to your home. You tell them, based on the list that we have already decided, what should be fixed and what shouldn't be fixed because it's not beautification, it is code violations. So once everyone agrees to that, they select the contractor. We had this conversation, you said you were going to come to my office.
I still don't, I don't think that you're understanding my question clearly. I'm not asking for the process that, of them selecting, you explained that already. They had already selected the contractor or the contractor was selected for them. The work had begun partially and then the contractor decided they did not want to do the work for whatever reason.
I know of one case like that and we can talk off record, but this particular lady called me, called the BA, called the mayor, not sure if she called any other council person, but she actually hired the contractor to do something else. It has nothing to do with the list of work we approved.
So with that being said, let's say if, I'll speak for myself, if I hired the contractor to do something else that was not in the contract, the contractor, who is a certified contractor from the program, correct?
Yes.
Aren't they liable or responsible to do the work that's outlined?
Only on what's been asked for them to do and everybody agreed to.
How could the contractor draw down funds?
It happens every day. No, they never drew down funds. I said the homeowner and the contractor made an agreement on the side. And then when the homeowner didn't like what the contractor did, she came back to us and said, "Oh, he did this and did that." But this is the five items we agreed for him to fix. You decided to give him two more items and then he didn't turn out the way you want. You want me to charge the contractor? I can't do that. I have an agreement. We all signed. These are the things that you're supposed to do. Anything on the side, that's between you and the contractor, not between me.
So the last question, I don't want to elongate this. I, we can probably discuss this offline or through the BA. If that is the case, if contractor has a contract, how can they do partial of the work, only draw down twelve thousand dollars and then walk away from all of the items on the contract if there's an agreement between your office, the contractor and the resident, regardless of whatever the resident's arrangement was with the contractor? From, and again, that's why I'm asking you because I'm only being provided information that they've already drew down on twelve thousand dollars of the thirty. So if that is the case and the contractor was already outlined to do thirty thousand dollars worth of work, how can they walk away regardless of whatever transpired unless the resident is saying, "I no longer want this contractor"? How can the contractor just say, "I'm not doing what I agreed to do for thirty thousand dollars because she asked me to do two thousand dollars worth of work and I'm adding it to the bill of here"? So I don't know if that is the case, but I think it needs to be at least be figured out so that the resident...
That is the case. That is the case. And the homeowner has agreed to allow that contractor to step off and hire another one. That is the case. The homeowner has made an arrangement with this particular contractor to do extra work that was not listed on the items that we paid for. The contractor did up to, let's say there was ten items, he did four. It turned out to be the cost of twelve thousand dollars, the value. We paid him that, she signed an agreement and we hired another contractor to finish the work.
Okay.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call and item number twenty-eight for approval, Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Congratulations to that great team in front of me, Mrs. Viles and Director. Great job. My vote is yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number twenty-eight is hereby adopted.
Number twenty-nine, Madam Clerk?
Next item is item number twenty-nine. Resolution to amend Resolution number twenty-five-seventeen.
We don't have it.
Authorizing Budget Revision Number Five for the substantial amendment to the twenty nineteen dash twenty-twenty-one-year annual action plan for CDBG and ESG COVID-nineteen pure act funding. Committee Development Resolution Twenty-One, Two, Three, Five.
Second. I yell faster.
Discussion?
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilman Velez and Mendez. Discussion, Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Council President. Council colleagues, you see, I left on everybody's desk, there's questions that I needed to ask Barbara about the COVID. As you know, as we sat in committee meeting, I was in disagreement with the round three that was being distributed. As you can see, looking at the allocations that were, I think, the first item I need to ask is about the food pantry. My understanding is that there was nowhere in the contract that they couldn't get reimbursed for salaries if they had not bought food. I'm asking a question.
No, it's not spelled out in the contract that way. It states that there is a category for salaries and there's a category for product or for program.
Right. Right, so, but, but, but they were not able to receive the category for salary if they had not bought food.
They haven't drawn down, Councilwoman...
No, that's what, no, let her answer.
Okay.
She's the director.
Yes, they have not actually presented, if you were talking about one particular agency.
I'm talking about a couple of them.
Okay, so. Councilwoman...
I'll let her finish.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yeah, please.
Councilwoman Cotton speaking, right?
No, no, but I was...
You got to ask for the floor. You got to ask for the floor. No, no, but you can't address your colleagues.
No, I'm just saying, I wanted to be...
Councilmembers, even when you addressing your colleagues, you got to ask for the floor because we still interacting here in the council. All right, Councilwoman Cotton, do you finish?
No, I'm not.
Continue, please.
Okay, so in other words, they could not get reimbursed for salaries if they had not purchased food?
Yes. If they have not brought their, if they have not started their program.
Okay. Now, you know what, I'm looking at all these names up here and I disagree with round three because I'd said that we needed more mental illness services besides more food pantries at round three. So I disagree with round three because mental illness is really affecting our community and we need to be able to put some resource in that. But the one thing...
We just put out the RFP for that, yes, today.
You just said what?
It's on the website today. It's in the newspaper today as well.
Okay. And we also had a big discussion about not changing anything. What's the resolution constantly for us that we really shouldn't change it because we need to take your advice on what you recommended? But then I disagreed with your recommendation and I disagreed. Other councilmembers do not disagree. I know that we need mental illness help here in the city badly. Now, my next question to you is that once we, we have to decide today what we're going to do with round, leftover money from the other rounds because round three...
Well, the resolution only has leftover money from round two.
Right.
And three is out now.
Now, if we wanted to use this money for rapid rehousing, we couldn't do that.
No, there is a separate category for rapid rehousing.
So councilmembers, councilmembers.
Just a second, Council President.
Hold on a minute, if you allow me. This is not a workshop meeting.
No, 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 it's not a workshop and that's why I sent her the questions.
No, no, I understand.
Before I make my vote, that's all. I want to send her, and I got, there's a person in the audience that needs to say something too. So my question to you...
Rapid rehousing is covered under HESG, which is the second B. That's what's left over.
Right. Now, when I look at the resolution, there's an item missing from when we had our original workshop.
What item? Which item, I'm sorry?
Fixing the facilities.
That's number one.
It's in the consent agenda. It's consent agenda.
It's a different item.
No, no, it was all in this one resolution. It was not in that.
I had five resolutions.
Right. No, wasn't one organization with the Boys and Girls Club?
It's item number seven, it's consent agenda.
No, wait a second.
It's number seven.
No, what I'm saying, wasn't that connected to the Boys and Girls Club?
Yes.
When we had our workshop?
Yes.
It was not a separate item?
It was. I had five resolutions.
All right. I disagree with, you know, even though the state of New Jersey gave a lot of food out for organizations and they needed to that, to feed people, I know that they also, but I disagree with round three, you know, the second round leftover, that an organization should get that kind of money for food pantry because we got mental illness in here that we need to. And I think that...
Any agencies can apply for mental illness.
Okay.
It's online now.
You, you know, I hear you, you're a director, you, you know, you really don't come out to the community to see what's needed. You don't walk the streets of Governor Godwin 12, Rosa Parks, all of that and see the situation that's going on and not just my area, but in a lot of other areas. So if any other councilmen, I disagree with how we should spend it on some of the stuff. Mental illness is a big issue in our city and no one seems to understand that this is what's happening. So if anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I do. Council President?
Hold on a minute. So before you go, Councilwoman Davila. Councilmembers, I keep saying we have to be a little bit more proactive, right? I gotten upset a few times with the administration because budgets get submitted to the feds and then, you know, you guys tell us that it's too late to make any changes, right? This is not the situation with this, by the way, but it has happened in the past. You know, the meetings are recorded, so I have asked those questions. Now, one thing I have to disagree with my colleagues is that if you want those services, you have to do it beforehand. You cannot wait until an RFP comes out, right? The administration already decided how the funding will be used. An RFP goes out. We've been talking for years now that some of our agencies need to be better prepared and I'm sure some of them are prepared, but for whatever reason, some of them seem to be disqualified because certain things have taken place that we need to, we need to address regarding if an allocation, like right now we're voting on something. Let's say we have multiple agencies in this resolution. Someone needs to assist those agencies to make sure the contracts are signed on a timely manner. And the reason I'm bringing this up, I work at the county. We award funding sometimes to the, to the city. And I could recall how I used to, I'll tell you which program, paratransit, right? We used to allocate, we used to award monies for transportation. I used to send a contract, we used to send a contract to Patterson, Pesake and Clifton. I would get Clifton and Pesake. Patterson, I would have to call all the time and it would be months and months and months and I still don't have the contract coming back to us. So there's got to be a level of accountability at every level. Not just, you know, we often talk about, oh, the garbage not picked. No, and I'm talking about every level, the culture needs to change. So we complain... So, we complaining that some of these agencies didn't get the contracts back to us. I wanna know the root of the problem, though. Like, how fast did we get the contracts to the agencies? We have to be fair. And again, that's not a conversation for right now, but this conversation needs to be had. As soon as we vote on this, on this, on this resolutions to award funds, we need to have a turnaround time for these contracts to go out to these agencies. And also have a timeframe for these agencies to return it. And then so what? You know, Barbara, you've been doing this for a long time. I don't have to tell you how to do your job. I have confidence that you do your job the way you're supposed to do it. But you know, there's monitoring that takes place after that. To make sure that we don't lose money, like, I don't wanna be in the paper, not since I've been a council member. I don't wanna be in the paper, like we were in the past, that, oh, we failed to spend money and now we're gonna lose it. When we have a, a, a community that's in need, we should be ashamed every time we even contemplate-
Right.
Losing money. Or, when we hear, there was, and, and, and I hate to go off subject because I, I like to entertain what's before me, right? This is not a workshop session. But not long ago, we had a conversation here how we tried to grab money that was supposed to be for first-time homebuyers and put it in a, in a different section. We have also reallocated funding that was supposed to go for a specific purpose. That was the plan that we had as a city. Because there was a need in the city for those services. And then we turned around, we said, well, we're gonna use it in this park. That wasn't the initial intent of the money. That, that's gonna happen from time to time. But if we monitor and make sure that the agencies, we stay in touch with the agencies, we could catch those things early enough to say, you know what? This agency is not spending the money quick enough. They're not gonna be able to spend it by year end. Then we could maybe award it to other agencies, like, you know, just throwing a name, I'm not showing favoritism, but I see one of the reps here, let's say Mr. G's kids or whoever, doesn't matter. But, um-
It's not we, Council President.
What's that?
Not we, you said we did. That wasn't we function, it wasn't a council function. That was an administrative function.
No, but I mean, as a city, as a city, I mean, as a city. When I say we, I mean the city. We're one. I leave it, I leave it at that for now. Council, Councilwoman Davila?
So, again, I'm going to say this, we had an extensive conversation in workshop. But even so, in workshop, I stated to my colleagues that the committee met, full committee, our chair of, of community development, the vice chair and the two members, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mimms and Councilwoman Colique. And, you know, I, I, it's okay, we can agree to disagree on certain things, but we heard clearly in that committee meeting what the director stated and the monitors that were there that monitor some of these programs. Okay, so when you talk about, you know, due diligence, when you talk about, and I know that Council President wasn't telling you, he said, you know how to do your job. And you protect the city and you protect yourself as well, because there are HUD rules and guidelines. And so, some of the things that I heard in that committee meeting, which I don't wanna put here today, in that, it, it was alarming. So, when you have entities stating, oh, we're not being given an opportunity, it isn't true. It's in black and white. People are getting monies and they're not drawing down and not providing the information that is being requested month after month after month. You have entities that, it's been ten months that haven't provided information. Now, food pantry, when I see an entity that is able to sustain, that is able to put forth twenty-five thousand dollars a month and feed five hundred families and show proof of what is being done and doing it correctly with invoices and so forth. That is the type of entity that, yes, I wanna support. So, when we talk about food pantry, when we talk about mental health, I have mental health in my family and issues. My God, I wanna see monies there. Thank you for putting, I think it was, was it half a million?
Yes.
Okay, for, for a mental, um, mental health. People gotta apply. There is a process. Nothing has changed. If you are an entity, a nonprofit, you know that there's applications that are coming out. You are supposed to be on it. Why do we always have to go after individuals that are prepared and are presenting, okay? And present, and being able to sustain? Because a lot of times, you, 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 your, your average individual does not understand that, no, no, no. You're applying for this, but guess what? You're gonna have to put up front. We can't pay you salaries if you cannot show, you said you did the work. Okay, where are the invoices? If you paid, if you purchased the amount of food that you needed, where are the invoices? So, how do I pay you if you cannot provide the paperwork? Please let us not confuse the community. I mean, it's just unfortunate. And again, we heard, we were there for over an hour. It was a great meeting. I'm happy that I was part of that meeting because normally it's done during the time that I'm working. But, let's keep it real. There is more to the story. I always say, there's always your version, mine, and then the truth in the middle. So, I just wanted, just wanted to put that on record because when we talk about food pantry, there's still people here in the city of Patterson that don't have enough food.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you. Um, um, one, let me come back, let me get in, find a space in the middle then, Councilwoman Davila. So, to Council President's commentary with regard to us being proactive, I totally agree. But I think you can acknowledge that we all aren't privy. Some of us, although we're council members, we're not privy or don't have access to the administration in ways in which we can advocate fairly for, for our, our rep, people who we represent. That's the first thing. Secondly, I can't help but to point out the fact that there is a reason for the technical assistance dollars. Our community development department has never done a job to, as Councilwoman Cotton is talking about, to do outreach, to make sure that we extend those technical support dollars to render the support to those organizations who desperately need it.
Where's the technical support dollars?
I'm sorry, one second, Director. We know that there's a large number of nonprofits that come into this community that do their yearly gala where they can raise three million dollars because they have access to other people and other individuals and other organizations outside of Patterson where those homegrown entities do not. So, there is definitely a disparage, a disparage when it comes to capacity. So, we have to acknowledge that. We have to recognize that. And I'll say this, when you talk about Oasis and the last go-round, not only receiving an uptick of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one session, but they also got a hundred thousand dollars in food or, or COVID money that they had to return because they could not recognize or point out the families in need. If you're a service provider in the city of Patterson and you cannot find families of need, you shouldn't be rendering services in the city. Or, there needs to be a reevaluation. So, if, when, if they were unable to draw, I'm sorry, please.
We can't do that, please.
If they were unable to draw down on that funding because they were unable to recognize those families in need, that needs to be talked about. And I'll say this lastly, Council President, because we have to understand, we have to get the pulse of our community, we have to understand. One, there has been a mor- a memoratorium on evictions. We're getting ready to see a record number of evictions and families of need, homeless people and people without housing. And when I look at, when I call the Heart of Hannah and I look at the work that they've been doing and the fact that they already ran out of funding and their, 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 their dispersment is only a hundred and twenty thousand, and I look down the line and I see other, you know, agencies that are, you know, four hundred and eighty thousand. And I, I, I do understand. And these, these entities do render a, a, a great service, but they have a, a situation, a machine already set up. We need to make sure that the, the service providers who are in the community, who live in the community, who work amongst the people, who have no difficulties recognizing and being able to find those families in need and be able to render the services that are much, much needed. You know, I, it, it's disappointing that we have to, that Heart of Hannah have to turn away people and send them over to Catholic families and, or any other service providers. We have to make sure that the service providers here are fully funded. And the technical support dollars that are there, that can grow capacity, that should be doing certain things, like maybe if we have five organizations, maybe they should share and someone to do certain responsibilities in, in doing their books and things of that nature. But, it is our responsibility as a, as a, as a municipality that has a department, that has this, that takes in this money to render these services, to make sure the service providers are able to do what they have to do.
Thank you very much. Before we continue, I just wanna hear from the Director. What technical dollars, because I, I never heard-
We have no technical dollars.
So-
I just asked, where is it?
What technical dollars are we referring to?
It was just here in the previous item we voted on.
Show me, which one?
That's, that's the resolution for the consultant to teach us how to make sure we answer all of our requirements.
Technical support dollars, services can go to teaching the organizations.
It's for us.
So, so, council members, before we continue, we have three, three other council members. Hold on a minute. So, three other council members. And the reason we're extending this discussion is because we're not ha- doing this the whole year. There is a process. Listen, we have heard from agencies, we need to support them more, I understand. But now, you're responsible, Barbara-
Yes.
To make sure we follow the guidelines and the city doesn't get in trouble.
Yes.
So, I'm not gonna overstep my boundaries. I might have recommendations based on what I hear from the community. But ultimately, I'll bring those recommendations to you and I wanna hear from you, like I'm listening right now. But I'm not gonna impose and tell you how to do your job.
Thank you.
Um, I don't think that's right. You should know more than us when it comes to the guidelines regarding HUD dollars. And, um, yes, you know, I wish we were more involved when it comes time to deciding what, how we're gonna use the funding. Because we do hear from the community what their needs are. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the, my council colleagues continue with the discussion. But all we could do, listen, we cannot change the past. The process have been followed, right, in accordance to the law?
Yes.
And all we could say is, listen, let's see what we could do to facilitate, to help these entities that wanna provide some services in the community. Uh, let's get them prepared. We, we always talk about it, but we never take the next step. So, I, um, Councilwoman Cotton, I, you know, my, my recommendation is that in your committee, have that conversation to see what we could do to facilitate and educate this, this entities and prepare them for, so they could be able to, to apply and actually provide the services. Because applying is just the beginning. Once you get the money, you need to provide the service in accordance to what the guidelines are. So, Councilwoman Velez, you have the floor next?
Yes.
Then it's Councilwoman Mendez and then Councilwoman Mimms.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council Mendez. See, I'm looking at the list and I went to round one. You know, when I see, when I see organization returning the funds-
Yes.
And that is so critical for me because they returned the fund in the middle of the pandemic, a pandemic, it's COVID-nineteen.
Yes.
So, you know, and this are people that, um, some of them already, organization have been here for longest. Now, uh, and, and when we talk about food pantry, you know, um, I commend the county that went out and put boxes in people's houses and seniors and the city did the same thing, you know. We had to remember that, remind people that COVID-nineteen came with our book of instructions.
Right.
So, down the lo- down the road, things had to get done. So, you know, I commend your department, those that was involved through human services and other, uh, uh, division to try to, to satisfy the needs of those individuals cannot even come out of their houses to do things. But that creates a concern when they issue, sign contract, give fund, they return it back.
Yes.
So, my recommendation, and it will be, um, something simple. If you wanna get an organization that, that probably are starting to serve the community, I commend you. But sometimes this organization had to start treating organization, nonprofits, organization as business. And start business, business planning and start doing, uh, getting people that, uh, do grant writing.
Right.
Because nowadays, there are people doing grants through the internet and, or, or, and they miss a deadline and they could lose time or, or even funding. So, not just take a board and this is the board, we're gonna do this. Get grant writers, get people that really know how to write and ask money, not only for the city, okay? Because meanwhile, they entertain themselves looking funny from us, a, a distressed city, okay? They losing the opportunity on the county level, on the state level, even on the federal level. So, directly, if their organization are well established.
Okay.
So, um, I, I, once again, I know you live in Patterson. I know you work in Patterson. I know you read articles from Patterson. I know you read the news when people are in need. And I know if you have more to give, I know your department will be diligent to give it out to them. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Mendez, you know-
Thank you. And Council President, I've been very quiet and patient because I think that we should move a little quicker with this item. We definitely have a very long discussion at the workshop. And, and just for the record, I'm gonna use this time for the record. Uh, and the Director know how uncomfortable I feel about the same organization getting those large funding. I, I feel very uncomfortable. I'm against that. But at the same time, we have to be realistic, we have to be honest. You're doing your job, you got the experience to do your job. But we have to teach those entity in term of the timeline, in term of the way they're spending the money. They need more structure. And we all agree on that.
Yes.
I think that we, uh, and this is my recommendation to you. Let's look into some way, if there's a possibility out there, there's some funding that we could definitely put it together to teach those organizations to be, you know, to structure themselves and be ready to apply for those loan and to spend the money that we have to spend it. Uh, and also, after they get the money, so let's follow up with them. And now we're into the last inning. And see that they didn't spend the funding, that we will have to come back and reallocate the funding and give those dollars to the same organization again. Because they have the structure, they know how to apply. I think that, that's where the direction that we, that we have to take on this. And just ready to vote. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Mimms?
So, just quickly, I think a lot of what I was gonna say was already stated. But I do wanna put it on the record that there was a process in place of the applications and putting it in the newspapers. But in our committee, there were recommendations made that it would be on the access channel, that we would expand and send the information, which has now been done to the council so that we can do, um, we can send it out through whatever methods and our vehicles that we have, which wasn't done in the past. What I've heard, and I know a lot of times we see the applications, and my first question coming to the committee was, who applied, right? Because you could hear the chatter outside of that. But if you haven't applied, I mean, that takes you out of the equation. You have to apply first. But there are some concerns when I see some of the same entities always getting the bigger dollars and then some of our smaller entities that do a lot of work, they're not getting it. So, one of the things I would love to see is that, um, when it comes to, for example, the food pantry or giving away food boxes, I would like to see some of that done through that COVID dollar money that we've had. If, if, we might have to find out if that's something that can be done. We have sixty-three point seven million dollars that's gonna be allocated to the city.
Oh, that's the state.
And, and I'm not sure if that can, it's, it's separate from this, but I'm just saying, some of that should be done from the city versus giving these large allocations out to nonprofits or making sure it's open and saying, we have the same entities that apply, let's look at other entities. For example, which is gonna be in, uh, in, is encoupled into consent, but I just wanna put it on record. We have two entities that have applied for facility improvements, right? So, for me, that money could have been used for the bathrooms at Eastside Park. It could have been used for other entities that are in desperate need. But, we didn't apply, so we had nonprofits that apply and we're gonna be repairing their facades and stuff like that on their buildings. When we have bathrooms in Eastside Park that are in total disarray. So, or the steps or the walkways. So, a lot of that money, I just think to our administration, when it comes to especially that money in that particular allocation, that we, we connect it with the vision plan and some of the other things that we have in place to make sure that money can be utilized for some of the stuff that a lot of the council members and their wards, they've been requesting and asking. I think some of that money should be allocated for some of that usage and maybe shared, shared around. But we did have this discussion in committee, but I just wanted to put it on the record that now we've expanded the vehicles and the ways and means of communication so that the communicate, community is more aware of when these applications are going out. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we're gonna take the roll right now, but, but, listen, we had a lengthy discussion on this already at the workshop. I understand a lot of times, and I'm not gonna suggest that some of us just like to, you know, speaking to the mic and, 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 and for people to watch. But we, we just got to move things along. We already had a lengthy discussion and workshop. Uh, we getting off topic all the time. Uh, let's just take a vote on this. Madam Clerk, please, uh, do the roll call. We, we're going to open the public portion after we take a vote. That's not, that's not the process. Ca- Council.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call and item number 29 for approval. Councilwoman Minkott.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, you know, I think that everybody maybe did not look at, um, the response that was given back. Um, I said that I, I, I totally disagree. I see what, what my community need, maybe because I'm out there every day. But, um, I know one thing that I think HUD, HUD needs to take a good look at how, how they operate and how they run and how they're going to, how they affect communities. Uh, when they send out CBG money, you know, they look at me like, well, you know what, Councilwoman, what do you got? You know what, I, somebody's going to listen eventually, one of these days, uh, how they should be distributing some of the money. Especially, and I know my friend goes on HUD and, and goes on them websites and goes on them Zoom meeting and, and HUD wanted those dollars to be designated to the communities with the most needs, with the most needs. And, and, and I'm just want to say that, uh, I disagree. I know where, I believe that it should go. Um, um, with, with everything that's going on, they think that, um, you know, sometimes you have to like take a, a different look at stuff and, and I see information is still missing. I do want to think, um, I had two community people that came and sat on the committee and that was Vivian Gaines and Tiffany Jacobs that sat on the committee, um, to review some of these, um, forms. But, uh, with that being said, I know what, what our community needs. I know what my ward needs. I know what all the, the entire city of Patterson needs. And with that being said, my vote is no.
Councilwoman Davila.
So as a councilwoman at large, I'm, I'm, I'm not to one specific, uh, ward, but to all the wards. When I look at, and when I sit down in meetings and, you know, there's a saying, the proof is in the pudding, black and white. When I look to see, and I, and, and I understand what councilwoman is saying, but I think we all know what our community as a whole and what the city of Patterson needs. Clearly, you know, every ward, you know, has some specialties, uh, but at the end of the day, it is Patterson. And when I look at entities that are able to provide food to 500, identify, identify 500 families a month, that says something about that type of organization. And so, do we want to see other organizations and smaller entities get the money? Absolutely. I think everyone has the opportunity, but your paperwork has to be right. And if you need assistance, maybe, I would be that type of person if I was a small, I would look at these bigger entities and I would set up a meeting and I say, can you please, can we sit down and have a meeting? Can you show me how? Can you show me how? I would sit down with the monitors, which is, to my understanding, the program monitors sit down. There's an email trail, there's paper trail to show the consistent communication between the different entities. So if you're not providing the information that is necessary for HUD, then don't get upset when you don't get the monies. But to, to, to say that, you know, I know what my community needs, I think we all here sitting here, we represent the community of Patterson and I will repeat it again, to see an entity that is able to identify 500 families a month, that was able to provide, do an RFP on their own, get a, 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 uh, I believe it was ShopRite who, who gave the, the best bid, get these boxes organized, organized. I would love for you guys, anyone out here, listening to me today, to reach out to the organizations and look at the, what they do on a, on a monthly and a daily basis at that. So, you know, with that said, you know, I, I am looking forward to supporting this. Uh, my vote, yes, Council President, peace to you too. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, you know, once again, I'll probably lie, fall somewhere in the middle. Um, there's no, there's no, um, I know it's totally unrelated, but I'll use this analogy. On a daily basis, I probably get residents coming to me, you know, who speak derogatory about Charles Florio and how, how much of a job they think that Charles, Charles Florio is doing on the community. Charles Florio is a business person. He's a businessman who's running his business the way he sees fit, which is best for his business. It's the city of Patterson that has to be accountable for what takes place and how things are going. So I can't point a finger at some of these other organizations on this list and be upset with them by the way they do business. They do business in a way that's best practices for them and they, they have seen a great deal of success. The only thing that I don't agree with, with Councilwoman Davila is the fact that other entities can go to them, turn to them and say, can you show me? Because is there, uh, many times, it's not a matter of not knowing how, it's a matter of capacity. You don't have the same amount of staff, you don't have the same amount of employees, uh, um, who, in those positions. And, you know, there's some highly capable people, but, you know, I, I know even as myself, as a smaller business, I don't get to be able to do some of the things that some of the larger, you know, national companies can do because I don't have the capacity. I would like to operate in the way that they do, but I don't necessarily have the capacity. But with that being said, it is our, it has to be our commitment as a community, as those who are duly elected, those who are appointed, those who are in administrative roles, to make sure that those homegrown entities are given a fair opportunity to grow and to render services. But I didn't have an opportunity, I don't sit on the committee and I didn't have an opportunity to hear from, um, from the organizations relative to what their issues are. I know there are some issues. But, um, understanding that this thing, uh, needs, uh, to move forward, I'm going to support it, but I definitely am going to continue to urge the director that the relationship between the, the city and these community-based organizations have to improve. Can't be here. I've been saying the same thing for the past several years. We can't continue to allow them to be kept on the sidelines or not be included in the, in the game. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mendez.
Um, thank you, Madam Clerk. And, um, before my vote, I just want to say that in order for us to split CDVG funding on a, on a different way, on a more fair, uh, level, um, we definitely need to understand that our nonprofit need help in the city of Patterson. There's a list of good organization in this list over here that doing an amazing job. I'm, I'm always in the street, I'm always in the community, you all know that. They doing a phenomenal job in the community. They know that our need and they helping people. But maybe they're not as well organized as those big entity. We have to find a way to make sure that they get on track when it comes to the timeline, when it comes to the way of spending the funding. That's the type of help that I would look, I would, I would love to look into. And this is a formal request through the chair, Madam BA, and our, uh, director, Director. Let's find a way to look for those funding to help those entity. We have, we have a lot of good organization. And I'm not going to mention any name, but I see a lot of them here that they apply and they didn't get the funding because they need help on how to apply, the timeline and so on and so forth. And for the record, everybody knows, I'm just tired to see the two organization getting all the funding. I, it's not fair, but at the same time, they are well prepared and they're ready. So we got to make sure that those entity, that they're, they're doing a great job. And as Councilwoman Jackson mentioned before, the entity that know our need, our problem in the community, we got to fight for them. And that's my only request. Once we get that accomplishment, you will see that those entity, they will be ready to apply and they will get the funding. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims.
So to the community, I spoke already, my vote is yes.
Councilwoman Villas.
Well, I don't want to repeat myself. And once again, those individual organization out there that are always applying, listen, think big, put big money in that, they will give you what you really need. Don't come with little and then they're going to put little, okay? Think big. Look at your programs, look what you could add into the program that will serve the community. Based on that, they will do the diligent to put the money where you need it. So I, I know Councilman, uh, uh, Jackson stated about Charles Florio. And I, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to refrain myself because I don't, I don't belong in the board. I don't get no favors from him and et cetera, et cetera. But you know what? The responsibility of administration is to do a lot of things that he's doing with this nonprofit organization. And I could mention on and on. For example, nonprofits organization, he had helped left and right with free rents. Every time they need something that they don't get from the administration, they go and knock the door, here, I will help you. Sport organization, when they don't have resources from the recreation department from the city of Patterson, those sport organization goes to those individual that care about Patterson, here, here's a check, I will help you out. When they need trips, they knock the door, here. Humanitarian relief, sending help to other countries when people knock their doors and he say, here, because it's out of state, it's out of the city, it's another country, but I still got to help because it's your, it's your feeling, it's your community and I want to help. And he assisted a lot of families. Look at this, a lot of families, when the city do not have a program, okay? When the city do not have a program for those victim of violence, when they die, they knock the door, here's a check for you to bury your loved ones. And still, there are people that take Facebook and social media to batch it and to batch those developers to get back to the community. And that's the chain. When the city have to do and create a plan without us knocking doors or other people, organization on the side, knock the door, the administration to make sure they have the funding to give it to those organization the right way. Saying that, I said it before, wrapping up, get a bit, treat your organization as a business, get a good business planner and make sure you get a grant writer, put the right facts on it, the application. Think big, they will give you what you need. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So I'm just going to say the more the better. We have a tendency as a council body to knock the entities that are being successful. Instead of helping others so we could have more successful entities and provide more services to the community, what we do is, the ones that are doing okay, we want to knock them. Same thing with developers. I'm going to take a, a similar narrative from what Councilwoman Jackson say. It is interesting how we give incentives, right? We have incentives to attract developers to come into Patterson. But once they're here, we like to knock them down. So it doesn't make any sense. When you get them here, let's try to get them to stay here. Now, and I don't mean to get off subject, but I'm just giving you an example. Purchasing, right? The more entities that submit bids, the better it is for the city of Patterson is, and, and, and the direct, and, and the purchasing agent is here. Um, what you think? I don't, I wouldn't like to see, um, local contractors get the contract, but there is a process. Just because every time we vote on a contract here, if I see two entities from Patterson that have applied or put in for a bid, just, I, I'm not going to get upset that they didn't get it. I would have loved to see them get it. But again, it goes to the lowest responsible bidder. Why am I saying this? Because there is a process. There is a process. And it's Barbara's job to make sure that the process is followed. There is a review committee that review every application with different criteria. They make a recommendation based on that criteria. So I just don't like every time, for the three years that I've been here, every time some councilmembers don't like what they see, it comment is passed about the allocation. Listen, they follow the process and the law. It wasn't arbitrary. Somebody just didn't say, let me just give money to this entity and this entity. I hope it did, that's what, I hope that's not what took place. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Um, Madam Clerk, we're going to do 25, then we're going to do the public portion.
May I announce this vote, vote?
Sure.
The vote is six in favor, one against, two absent. Item number 29 is hereby adopted.
Madam Clerk, can we do number 25 really quick and then we're going to do the public portion?
Yes. Next item is item number 25. Item number 25, resolution, reappointing Christopher C. White as the Constable of the city of Patterson, sponsored by Dr. Lelisa Mims, City Council Resolution 21, 231.
Some more.
Some more.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call and item number 25 for approval. Councilwoman Minkott. 25 to reappoint Mr. White as Constable.
You want to pass, Councilwoman Minkott?
25.
Number, number 25.
Number 25.
Let me just say to, uh, Christopher White, I've known him for a very long time, his lovely wife. Um, do not live in my ward, but the third ward. And Councilwoman Mims, this is an excellent choice.
Yes.
As a constable, he is already doing the job in another field, somewhere else, but he would be excellent as a constable here in the city of Patterson. Um, and it's an honor, it's a pleasure. Councilwoman Mims, perfect choice. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davila.
Councilwoman Mims, is, is your constable to be here?
He's not here.
So I don't have the pleasure of knowing who he is, but just by hearing Councilwoman Minkott speak and seeing that Councilwoman Mims has put his name forth, uh, truly, you know, when we, when we, um, choose, every council member has five appointments for constables. Um, it is not something that you just give to someone just to give it to them. And so, you know, with that said, not knowing the individual, Councilwoman Mims, I would love to meet him, okay? So I could say the great things Councilwoman Minkott said about him. Uh, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Mims.
And so let me just say, Mr. White works at the Patterson Library on Broadway. He does a phenomenal job there all the time. I have to commend, um, our clerk's office. I commend our corporation counsel, Ms. Mr. Abusi, and, uh, Chris White. There were some concerns with his, when he went to reapply for a reappointment. But Mr. White did his due diligence and I have to say, the clerk's office and corporation counsel, thank you for your due diligence in ensuring this great individual is reappointed as a constable. I, I commend you for that. I know he's watching. Thank you for all you do. I know you're working tonight at the Passaic County Community College. So thank you so much for the great work you're doing, the library and the college and for the great city of Patterson. You deserve this, well deserved. Thank you for doing the right thing to get yourself on the right track to serve our great city. My vote is absolutely yes for Mr. White.
Thank you. Councilwoman Villas.
Thank you. And I concur with, uh, Councilwoman Melissa Mims regarding appointing and Councilwoman, uh, Davila regarding appointing of constable. That's a, uh, a, uh, appointed by council. Um, they go to them and I believe they had, do their diligent work to interview them, to do their own background check free in the verbal, right? And making sure that they have the community in their heart to serve. So I respect those appointees and, um, and, and willing to work with them. Because when they work, even that, um, any council member appoint them, when we need them, they, they're available. And, um, no matter if, if I appointed them or not. Uh, please follow, uh, and I know he knows that, please follow the, uh, the state guidelines and especially municipal guidelines regarding constable. Make sure you fill out those report monthly, uh, for our clerk who have a login of it and making sure that you contribute back to the community with this position of constable. Saying that, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman, um, Abdulaziz and Councilman Kalik.
Yes.
We are voting on item number 25. Your vote is yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Kalik.
25. Congratulations, Mr. White. Uh, my vote is yes.
Congratulations, Mr. White, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor and none against. Item number twenty-five is hereby adopted.
So, Madam Clerk, let's do the public portion right now.
Yes, Mr. President. Next item is our public portion. Our public portion is now open, and we have ten speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Elvis Durham. Please state your name and address for the record, thank you.
Elvis.
Mr. Elvis Durham.
We missed you.
Two eighty-three Broadway, Patterson, New Jersey. Just wanna start off with my little brother, birthday celebration. Corey T. is gonna be at the D. Claflor on Tuesday, May eighteen, six P.M. to nine P.M. You could find out more information, just contact him on Facebook. Corey T., tickets is only forty, forty dollars, so, that ain't nothing, that's chicken change to y'all. I'm up here to talk about some concerns that's going on in the City of Patterson. I was speaking about this for like months and months. First, we got the parks, we got this park on the Fifth Ward. Louis Velez, need your attention, Councilman Louis?
I'm listening.
I contact you, I even spoke to Councilor at Law, Lisa Mims. We have a situation here in the park. Kids cannot play. You got, you got kids that getting, running out the park from drug addicts. And also, last night, on the Fifth Ward, Councilman, a young woman got hoed up by somebody, by gunplay, on your ward. And I had requests, time and time again, for police present on the Fifth Ward, the Fourth Ward, and the First Ward. Okay? Y'all should give me respect the same way I give y'all respect. I'm requesting police present. And earlier today, downtown Patterson, right by the police station, can I get all y'all's attention? Okay? A young woman with her baby, right by the police station, just walking. Bam 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 bam, shooting. For something. Come on now. I request for police present in the downtown area. Do y'all understand? I know I have a speech problem, but can y'all understand me? I'm a community activist, I'm a promoter. I respect y'all's job, so respect my job. I have people that I have to look at, out for, the community. Y'all should be helping me, y'all get paid for this, I don't. I need y'all help. Kids can't even go out in the park and play, you got these drug addicts, running them out the parking lot. I mean, running them out the park, pushing the kids, grabbing the kids. No, get out the park, we doing our thing. We the police, I need police present. Okay? But guess what y'all want, I vote come next year? I need y'all help right now. I asked, I asked, I had inbox, I had talked to Melissa Davila, Michael Jackson. Most everybody about a summer jam, put a summer jam together for these youth. Okay, it could be something small. Each and every one of y'all could do a summer jam for the youth. This city is the third largest city in the state of New Jersey. We don't have no recreations into buildings. It's a shame, pitiful. The third largest city, this is, Council President, this is not no town. I wanna correct you earlier, you were saying, I don't know, you did caught yourself, but you said town. Y'all need to stop saying town. This is the third largest city in the state of New Jersey. We need to respect that. Everyone. And Louis Velez?
Please wrap it up.
Come on now. I need police present.
Thank you.
Council President, wait, 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 wait. I respect you, respect me?
I am, I say please.
Okay, I'm the promoter for the City of Patterson, can you give me respect? I just need a little bit more time.
Okay.
I need, I need to see you in the community, I don't see you in the community. I need to walk this, me and you, walk the streets, you Council President. We never had that type of relationship, okay? We need a bond, I need to show you some things in the community.
Yeah, we could talk on the side about that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Durham.
Okay, I need your number too. You the only Council President, you the only council in the City of Patterson, I don't have your number. We need to communicate.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, Cameo Black.
Cameo Black, seven Southern Street, Patterson, New Jersey, O seven five O one. I'm here 'cause I'm the one that got stuck up last night at gunplay. I've met, Councilman Velez, he my neighbor. I'm always calling him, I'm always going to him. I'm tired of shit going on deaf ears. When that gun was to my neck last night, what would've happened? If my kids would've woke up with no mother. I'm sick of it. It's not the first, I'm the sixth victim in the Fifth Ward that had a gun to them. Everything in the Fifth Ward, it goes unswept. When I sat out there and he said to you, I could get the administrator to vouch for me, that my ward is the best ward, and then he said to you, there's a lot going on, speak to the administrator, point me in the right direction, 'cause I'm not talking to you no more, I'm tired of talking. I'm sick of it, and you know I always come to you, I'm active in the community. I'm the one always calling the cops at the park, blind bleach, wiping everything down for all the kids to play. You know how I'm coming, and I'm sick of it. And for me to have a gun to my fucking neck and my money gets took yesterday, I don't wanna talk no more. The police need to be out there. This Fifth Ward is not the best, there's a lot going on out there, a lot. And it's always with guns, broad daylight, ten thirteen, the bakery downstairs from my house got robbed. When the gun, A, B, C, D, is in front of my building, four o'clock in the morning, my kids gotta hit the floor. You was in D.R., I tried to call you, you was on vacation, it's out of control. And nothing ever hit the paper, everything is swept under the rug. It's time for this shit to come to the light, because guess what? If somebody in my family gotta bury me, I don't wanna talk. And I don't want the city, that's all the city do, is help kick out money. I don't want y'all money, I don't never ask for no help, I got receipts, you know. I buy everything myself. Every year for the damn programs, Ruby Cotton, you also know, what do I do? Cases awarded for the kids, I don't never ask the city for anything. And that money that got took yesterday could've went towards shit for kids, that's what I do. So, I'm asking you, as I'm talking to you, to get off your phone, acknowledge what I'm saying to you, and help me out, 'cause you're my neighbor. And I constantly call you and I constantly reach out to you. So, where, from now on, how can you help me?
Council President?
Hold on a minute, let me speak.
And I could get the whole Fifth Ward to back me up?
Let me speak. Listen, we don't normally, the practice here, the procedures is, we don't interject right after every speaker. What we do is, we let every speaker speak, and then we speak at the end. But given the situation, you know, two of my council colleagues, you know, made a case to me that they owe you, you know, we owe you, at least an answer right now. I hope the speakers that go behind you don't, you know, don't get offended, and I hope you understand why we doing this. We're gonna, I'm gonna allow my colleagues right now to address the situation. So, I'm gonna let the Fifth Ward Councilman?
Correct.
Address the speaker, and let's try to make it brief, you know, we can get our point across in a short period of time.
I am, I'm trying to, when it comes up to my ward, I try to be brief. She stated, she always called me, she stated, she always cooperated to give me information, what's going on the ward. And I could prove you, the police could prove you, how many times I called headquarters, how many times I called the Director of Police, with a lot of information, not only you, from, even from my ward and outside ward. If I would know how many times they stab people in the City of Patterson, I probably would be Superman being there before they stab them. We don't have control of that. The administration had to set up a plan to make sure that our streets are safe, that our residents feel safe in our streets, that our taxes be low, that jobs are created. The administration is the one that's supposed, if we pulled them the tools that we had done it before, okay? They are the one to implement it with the police. Now, to prove you, ma'am, you said that you got robbed yesterday.
Last night on my way.
Last night.
The corner of our block, right on the corner with Monkey's Breath, our block, right there.
So, let me, let me, let me, let me just give you this highlight. I sent a letter to the mayor of the City of Patterson. On April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Please be advised that I have received numerous complaints from the residents and business owner who are frustrated with the frequent and armed robberies in the Fifth Ward. I am therefore respectfully requesting full walking patrol, okay? Police presence in the following areas. Market Street between Straight Street and Madison Avenue, and Park Avenue from East Twenty-Second Street and Straight Street. I could request that in the entire city, not go do a press conference in the Sixth Ward and then all the crime is happening in the other wards. April twenty-first, before you got robbed, I told the administration, we need walking patrol officers. We need, I could prove you that before coming to this meeting, I walked Roberto Clemente all the way back to the Casibo, and from there, I called the police to tell them what kind of activity they are back there. I could risk my life, yes, I would do it because I love the community. And you see me at twelve, one o'clock in the morning, when my car is not there, everybody calls me and they say I have the Knight Rider car up and down the Fifth Ward. You know, I go Park Avenue, Carrow Street, you know what people tell me? Hey, Snitzer, you don't get that. I get that, and I don't care, I love the Fifth Ward, I love my community. And let me tell you something, if I wanna bring quality of life, I don't care what, if I have a bullet in my name, but I will do it, and you know that I work hard to keep the Fifth Ward clear it is. And Mr. Durham, I'm not running this year. Hopefully, I could run the next twenty-four, okay? But you know, you have my number, Ms. Black, keep on calling me, I always address your concern. But this all fall in the administration. I cannot call the Chief of Police, you imagine that, to tell them my concerns as a resident?
Councilman.
So, you know what, ma'am, you know, we live together, we live in the same block.
We live on the same block.
Yeah, no, same block, and I wanna clear that. But when you in the same block, whatever affect you affects me, trust me. And whatever I could do to alleviate the quality of life in the City of Patterson, not only the Fifth Ward, all the way around, because I receive call from every ward. Trust me, I'll be there for you, okay?
I hope so.
And matter of fact, you made a police report?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
So, to the residents and to yourself, I could sympathize what happened to you, and we could all sympathize, you know? That happened to my stepdaughter a while back, and I know what it does psychologically, and I always put myself...
Physically, it's fine, but mentally?
That's what I mean.
There's a lot to deal with, 'cause we're the bullet with the wind off.
No, no, but that's what I mean mentally, like, I always try to put myself in other people's shoes, right? If I was in your situation, I would not be happy for a long time. But like Councilman Velez stated, it doesn't make the situation any better. The resources have been there for a while, I don't know what the situation is that we have not been able to hire for now, multiple years now, enough police officers to actually even patrol our streets.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You saying y'all don't got enough police officers. Let me tell you something, I ride around the City of Patterson, you can't bullshit and bullshit, excuse my language, but if you ride past the Sixth Ward, it's a lot of police out there.
Say it.
You ride past Ten Fifth, it's a lot of police out there. Downtown, it's a lot of police.
Hear me out, I'm not making an excuse, what I'm saying is, when we address the concerns, like...
So, don't, don't tell me that.
Hear me out, I'm just telling you.
Go ahead.
So, when the residents such as you call us with concerns, we call the administration. What we're told is that...
I keep pointing over here to this administration, who the administrator? 'Cause I hope you ain't so, who the administrator?
So, this is what it is, we have two branches of government. We're the legislative body, we approve their budget, they're supposed to execute the plan, right? They're supposed to enforce their ordinances, they're in charge of the police, DPW, everyone else, they're in charge.
The mayor.
The mayor, the mayor, that's when we say administration, is the mayor and the staff.
And the B.A.
And it's not to push the blame, listen, I take blame for what I'm responsible for. I wish I could say, look, it's my responsibility, let me fix it. All we could do is call it in. A lot of times, we just serve as, as a channel to try to get things done, which we shouldn't.
And then it's crazy, when you come here to talk to y'all, to try to do prevention. Nothing don't never happen, but then when retaliation come, then you going to jail, you getting life, and that's what I'm trying to avoid.
So, we don't...
That's what I'm trying to avoid. Some people here know me, and I did a fucking one eighty, I don't wanna go back to that.
So, listen, we're not...
But at the same time, I'm not gonna sit up here and keep telling me, the administration, administration.
So, listen, I try to, I apologize for trying to, you know, be truthful with you, I apologize.
Are you really?
I am, I am. You could check with all the colleagues, that's how the government works here, and it's a shame. A lot of times, residents call me and say, look, I called the police, they haven't showed up for two hours. The only, the only thing I could do is try to use now my position, which is shameful, to try to get them to get someone there as soon as possible, but that's not what we do. Like, we don't, we cannot fire a lot of these employees, we cannot hold them accountable in that way.
You can't fire them.
All right, let's not, listen, we could talk on the side, we're not gonna have this.
I'm not gonna stop, Ms. Black.
Can you make it, let's make it brief, 'cause we gotta continue. That's why I didn't wanna get off the procedures.
First of all, how much money was stolen from you?
A hundred and seventy-five dollars, my debit card, my social, and my I.D. So, now I gotta replace all that stuff.
Okay, so, we can help, I'll make sure we can help with first replacing what was stolen and helping you get the documents you need. Now, forgive me for making a very childish analogy, but I try to make things very simple so we all can understand. If you go to a restaurant and your food is horrible, you take it out on the waitress. She didn't cook your food.
No, I wouldn't.
Most people do, and that's what happens here at the council. We're the waitresses, they're the chefs. The mayor and the B.A. right there, that's, those are the people that are in charge of the services that you are not receiving. About two months ago, my son was seconds from being caught in the middle of a gunfight. I called every one of them, as angry as you are, I was just as angry. My hands was shaking, and I called every one of them. None of them took my phone call. I called the mayor, I called the B.A., I called the Chief of Police. I called the Chief of Police. I called the Director, he was one of the only ones who took my phone call. I called people who supported this mayor, I wanted to fight. Real talk, because I was angry. And I'm tired of seeing people in our community, specifically the black community, being victims of gun violence, and nothing is done. The mayor travels around with police officers, two police officers, he travels around this community, won't walk around these streets by himself, but he travels around with multiple police officers that should be on the beat someplace. So, I'm gonna acknowledge exactly what you talked about, where other parts of our community get special services. They pulled officers off of the Detective Bureau to do work in the Sixth Ward for petty break-ins, petty break-ins, and you have murders that haven't been solved. And yet, we have officers being pulled off to go certain parts of the community to do investigation. I'm sorry, please don't do that, don't do that. Don't do that, please.
We can't, we can't have that.
You have your moment at the podium. We definitely, in defense of Councilman Velez, this dude is crazy. He will ride in the back of a garbage truck if they let him. He will ride shotgun in the police car. He will jump out and try to be a police officer himself, I watched him do it. His passion for his ward is there, but we have to call nine-one-one the same way you do. When you call a council person and say, this is my issue, we have to call, if it wasn't for the Director, speeds you out, if he's asleep that night, I gotta call nine-one-one the same way you do. So, I just wanna spell it out clearly for you, what is the purview of the council people? What is our, what things we can and cannot do? If I see an officer out in the street, he's not taking directive from me. In fact, I wrote a piece of legislation that forbids the roads to be closed before nine A.M. This morning, it was two roads closed, I go out there, take pictures, I'm telling him, listen, this is unlawful, you can't do this, they do things to us, and it is a responsibility of the administration to make sure this doesn't happen. So, everything that happens in this community, and I don't want you to come here and not address your frustration, you have to, this is your only outlet. I just want you to direct it in the right direction, don't put your neck that way, it's over this way, and we will assist you with making sure that we hold them accountable to rendering the services that they are responsible for rendering. I'm getting tired of this nonsense the same way you... I'm getting tired of this nonsense, the same way you are. When my son got caught in that gun, was almost in that gunfight, not one of them called me to say, listen, I feel sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm empathetic to your situation.
And they not.
This the type of treatment that our community gets from people who take these jobs and do it.
One time, I called, um, the Patterson police, I didn't get an answer. When I called nine-one-one, nine-one-one said, we're calling three-two-one-one-one-one, and we can't get through neither. So, if nine-one-one can't get through, it's like.
Thank you.
Councilman, I'll be brief.
So, so, Councilman, and I respect also to the other speakers, let's make it very brief, and, and let's just end it there, please.
I, I just want to, I, I just want to take this quick moment to, to thank you for being here, because as the councilmen say, this is the only outlet you have to speak up, and we need more parent like you. There's a lot of things happening out there that you don't see it on the news, a lot of things. And you know what you remind me? My son, his three best friend got killed in the city of Patterson. I told my son, he was, he got, he, he went through a lot of mental issues. But a lot of parent, they stay home, they didn't stop picking up. This administration, they have to put a plan, that's their responsibility to put a plans in place. Let's stop the excuses, we know the problem, it's on their hands. We have a mayor that he took the position, now deliver it, do the job that you was hired to do it from the resident of the city of Patterson, enough excuses, we need more parent like you, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman members, and then we, the next speaker after this.
First of all, I want to thank, um, uh, the Prince of Patterson, Elvis, for tagging me on your situation, very, they talked about the sympathetic piece. Well, what I did earlier today, when I spoke to you, I sent an email to the BA. I copied the police director, the chief, and everyone on, on that email, asking for two things, and I'm going to put it on record, because I have not gotten a response. One, there's only one light on the block of Southern Street. We need to take a look, have the engineer go out to that block, um, I also copied the DPW director. We need to go to that block and identify, uh, the need of having more lighting on the block, that's one thing I, I put on the, in the email today. The second thing is additional police attention in this block, and also the calls to service that have been called on that block to identify a plan to help those residents. I sent that email earlier today, right after I was tagged on social media, and I have not gotten a response. So, I'm putting it on the record so the public is aware that as soon as I was tagged today, it was sent to the administration. So, I will be following up to make sure that there's some action on Southern Street.
I thank you.
Um, um, Council President.
Thank, thank you.
Let me just finish, I just cameo, let me just say cameo.
Yes.
So, now we're going to have.
Let me just.
Oh, nine members.
No, that's that because.
Can we just, can we just leave it for the end already, please?
I just want to say.
Ca- Councilman, please, let's just leave it for the end, um.
No, she's going to go home.
Next speaker, please, Madam Clerk, than- thank you, thank you.
Yes, Mr. President.
It's all right, you can call me Ms. Cotton, because she a ignorant fucking short fat.
And this is what I get, give her the courtesy, this is what I get. Let's go, let's go to the, let's go to the next one, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Mr. Gundalis.
Council members, we're not, we're not going to do this again, this is the first time that I do this in the whole year, where we interrupt the speaking process, right, the, 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 the structure that we have, the process, and I try to do a courtesy, and this is what we get. And now everyone wants to speak, when you have people been waiting here, we're supposed to do the public portion at eight o'clock, and it's already nine-thirty. Next speaker, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, next speaker, Mr. Gundalis, I think he left. Um, next speaker, um, Ms. Dorothy Martin. She left?
Good evening, Council President, Council. Um, we were talking about repairing roads, things of that nature. Well, I live on East Fortieth Street, off of Eleventh Ave, near Route Twenty. And when I tell you, I've been there fourteen years, and fourteen years it's been tow up. They come, and I call them coffee grinds that they put on the ground, I don't know who gave them the money to put them forty dollars worth of coffee grinds, because soon as it rains, they all pop up, holes as big as a tire. Soon as you turn off Eleventh Avenue to East Fortieth Street, forget about it. Route Twenty, between Dunkin' Donuts on East Thirtieth and, and East Terrace, the nastiest, dirtiest trees about to fall over, dead trees everywhere, near the mosque, everywhere, it should be a beautiful walking path. It is filthy, and I'm afraid. Over there with the boys places on Eleventh Avenue, I'm afraid to walk down there, the trees are leaning that way. There's a big line there, all it's going to take is one half of a good storm, and we're hit. We need somebody down there to go over to survey and see how many dead trees we have. Branches fall at a whisper, almost, you know, I'm afraid to walk down there. And it's really a beautiful area, if you're not afraid to walk around out there. The bridge that goes over to East Side Park, I love walking over that bridge when it's clean. You can barely walk that bridge, you got leaves all the way up there, I know I'm not the tallest person, but I mean, you know, up to my knees in garbage, you know. The area itself is ridiculous, ridiculous. And one more thing I wanted to point out, I'm a small business person, sole proprietor of Appy's Barbecue on East Thirtieth. And I came for help to ask if there's any grants or anything that people can help us with, with our small businesses. And I was advised that I should go across the street to, what's that, Willy, Willie P's, Willie, William Patterson, and get a a, a plan, I don't need a plan, I already got my plan, I need help. I don't need a, and, and they're not even open, so.
That's a waste of time.
I know it is. All I need is a cherry picker and somebody to put up some signs, could anybody help me? Get back to me on that?
Thank, thank you.
Okay, that's, that's all I, I request for tonight, it's been a very long night, and, uh, nothing else on the agenda that I need to talk about right at this moment, but thank you for your time, and please help the area.
Thank you, um, next speaker, please, Madam BA, did we take notes on, on all those concerns? Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. President, is Ms., um, Ms. Bracy.
All of you know why I'm here, let's talk about it, let's talk about it. Who were the two organizations that got funded? Who told y'all that we didn't have capacity as nonprofit organizations? Capacity means the number of people that you service, not the dollars that are in your budget. A lot of these organizations have million-dollar budgets, and that's not what HUD is about. HUD is the grassroots funding to bring new programs and services into your community. It's not to keep funding a cash cow. We've been funding a cash cow for over ten years, when is it going to stop? What about the low-income community? It ain't even about the black community, let's talk about it, it's about the rich versus the poor. I have a master's degree, I'm a grant writer, I wrote federal grants. I served my community for over fifteen years, that's how old my nonprofit is. And to keep getting dogged out by the same organization, the same director, I can't even blame the administration, because it's the same director over and over and over again, from Joey Torres to previous administration, since we got rid of Mary Lee, let's talk about it. I pay attention to my community, that's why y'all see the hashtag doing so well, I pay attention. But to see my organization get dogged out, time and time again, when we wrote two proposals, let's talk about phase three, people. Phase three was about substance abuse, it was about senior services, and it was about feeding people. Now, every round, they had feeding people in it, so I figured that was a HUD criterion, okay? They said substance abuse counseling and senior services, it's okay for us to be on TV? To show that the administration works, to show that the cities work, to show that the city serving people? Understand this about me, okay? When you want to know about Regana, Regana chooses her candidates based on the best need for her city. Andre was chosen because nobody else they were giving money to, they didn't trust them, let's talk about it, okay? So, if the money comes in, we had this conversation, we didn't, we might, when you was on the campaign trail, as to why I wasn't supporting you, which is no big deal, but we had a conversation. So, let's talk about this, for you guys to say that black nonprofits or low-income nonprofits don't have the organization, don't know how to do invoices, don't know how to do purchase orders, don't know how to pull down their money. But let's talk about what happens when your workers don't give us the contracts in a timely manner. Our grant was funded in July, tw- no, December twenty nineteen to begin with, and we have the proof, we have the letter from the city. It was for sixty thousand dollars, what we wrote for. Then, next thing you know, COVID comes, that amount got reduced to thirty thousand dollars. Then it was said that nonprofits could only apply if they were awarded COVID dolla- or not COVID dollars, regular CDB D dollars in December twenty nineteen. We were supposed to be awarded that, I have the letter. What happens comes the first phase of COVID, twenty twenty? Barbara snatches our proposal off the table before you guys vote. Then, we still get the eighty thousand for the COVID funding we wrote, so where's our sixty thousand that you snatched off the table? Because the only reason we were supposed to get the eighty was by getting the sixty. So, then we did something else in another round, they had extra money in the, um, first phase of COVID. So, we wrote for that, all for mental health services. We wrote for that, we were awarded half of that, which was sixty thousand and something. So, right now, we were ju- we're juggling with a hundred and forty thousand, and we're going to talk about it, based on three different proposals for the same exact thing, because of the adminis- because the administration and the council not reading your notes. It's both, let's blame both. So, now what we're going to talk about is this, okay?
Can we wrap it up, the three minutes are up?
No, I can't wrap it up, because there's more to say, because you're talking about millions of dollars, and I live in the third largest city in the city, and I service my community hands up and down, it's a problem.
So, the, listen, hear me out for a minute, you know, we give.
So, you want to talk, let me finish then, let me finish then, because you don't want the public to hear this.
It's not, it's not that I don't want the public, the three minutes were up, I gave you another like thirty seconds, normally, we ask you to wrap it up.
They stopped yielding time.
So, 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 listen, and, and I spoke to you, and I said I would.
But you still voted before allowing me to address something that's on the vote, and I still don't know what y'all voted on.
But we cannot entertain a discussion, this is something, it, it doesn't work that way, that's, that's, that's what public doesn't understand, it doesn't work that way.
So, why, so let me ask you this, why are we still waiting for a contract that was awarded in July twenty twenty, and your administration still hasn't released it?
I'm going, I'm going to let you wrap it up.
But then you said, we couldn't get the money we wrote for, for the third phase of funding, because we didn't draw down no money, and we didn't sign a contract. How could you sign and draw down what wasn't presented to you yet? And we have the proof.
So, all right.
I have it here, I have the emails.
Thank, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Oh, I met with him.
Thank you.
But it still falls on you when you guys voted, it's still.
So, 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 thank you, thank you very much, so, 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 first of all, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Nothing else was presented to us.
Thank you, thank you. So. Thank you, so, so, public perception, no one said here, we, we didn't pass no comments about agencies not being prepared. Review, the review board, whoever reviewed this, 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 um, proposals, they made the decision and were presented to us via recommendation. Just like they recommend contracts for us to approve? All right, so, so, we're done, uh, next speaker, next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, next speaker is Kondel Plummer, is Kondel.
All right, so, I expect a little better from, you know, agencies that work with us. We all got to do our research, next speaker, please.
Kondel Plummer.
Can you say the name again, I can't hear.
Kondel, K-O-N-D-E-L, Plummer.
Kondel, okay, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Warren Ellis.
Excuse me, Council President, can you turn on the mic, for, the mic, your mic's not on, so, no, okay, here, so, you got to turn it on, thank you.
Pardon me, once again, good evening, City Council. My name is Warren Ellis, I live at six oh one East Eighteenth Street, Patterson, New Jersey, apartment four zero one, which is a veterans building, you have to be a vet to live in this building. Here I stand with my DD two fourteen to show you that I'm a veteran. You understand, and, and I'm here because of just the situation she was just talking about, the potholes. All of these are different streets of potholes. Today, I rode over a pothole that knocked the spring out of my car. I am disabled, you understand, I get seven hundred and fifteen dollars a month in social security. I have to take care of me, my nineteen-year-old daughter that goes to trade school, Lincoln Tech, that I have to pay a hundred and fifty dollars a month out of my pocket so that she can go to trade school to take up computer engineering, because that's what she wanted to do. And I'm glad I'm dealing with it, because she just passed her midterms with a ninety-two, you understand? So, and, I haven't been the best person in the world, you understand? But fifteen years ago, I came home and I asked my daughter, mother, one thing, to give me my daughter and let me raise her. She's been living with me in six oh one East Eighteenth Street, apartment four zero one, for the last, since she was six years old. You understand, she doesn't have any kids, she graduated high school, and like I just said, she just passed up mid computer engineering at Lincoln Tech with a ninety-two. In December, she'll be graduating, we'll send her to our internship. I'm just here to tell you that the roads are hindrous. Like, I mean, it literally knocked the spring out the back of my car, I don't got no new car, but I try to keep it in the best condition, you know, so that I can get back and forth to my daughter in the event that she needs me, you know what I'm saying? But, I mean, it's not just one road, I don't want to, due to the COVID, I don't want to pass the phone around, but it's numerous roads. And as a veteran, I, I, I expect much more. I remember, you don't need a million cops, I remember when cops, when people got killed on the street, it wasn't nothing being sold on that street that day until that person was caught. Nothing was happening, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't need twenty, thirty, forty cops. You had three or four cops that came out there and say, listen, well, nothing be sold on this street this day until this person is turned over, turned himself in, or y'all giving them up. And that's what happened, that's when it was a police station in the neighborhood. I'm going to respect the time, I just want to say, really, like, y'all got a new tar truck? Put it to use, use it like you use a county truck, get the police to block the street off, so once they put the tar down, it isn't rolled right over, because if you put it down and it's rolled right over, it's going to come right up. Do the same thing you do for the county, do it for the city, so that we can hide better streets. Thank you for your time, enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker?
Next speaker, it's look like Deli Fritz, I'm not sure that person is here.
Not here.
They left. Next person is Mohammed. They left.
Not here.
Okay, and the next speaker, last but not least, Mr. Coleman.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Finally made it to public portion, last week, uh, last meeting.
Last week, uh, last meeting, I had to send you guys an email because you yeah, going on too long. But tonight, I, I had to stay because it's a very rough day today. Um, you know, most of you know that I'm in the new building here in downtown Patterson. And today, uh, we have our first, which I, uh, listen, since I've moved here, I've seen a lot of surprises. But this one is the ultimate. Uh, we have squatters inside our apartment building. And this is dangerous. This is extremely dangerous. I called Councilman Jackson because, um, we've got, I've got a lawyer in my building, I've got MTA, transit workers. I mean, these are prominent, middle-class people that came to Patterson along with myself trying to make a living. And we're getting ready to leave because, um, you know, we were told that New Jersey has, you know, very strict laws regarding the squatters. But this is dangerous. This is not a house, this is an apartment building where hundreds of people are living. And, um, from what I'm told, there's six people are in this one-bedroom apartment. And it started two weeks ago. And, um, I, I have to tell you, this is, this is not, this is not good. Because I have nowhere else to go, well, none of us do. We can't just pick up and leave. And these people are scary. This guy's eyes was out of his head. So I don't know who monitored these things or who can enforce the rules or regulations. But, I mean, there are people, I know one senior left, one lady left to stay with her daughter. Because now there's a public safety. Because they're in the hallways, they're in and out, in and out, in and out. So, um, you know, I don't know who to talk to, but, you know, I really want to hear from Kathleen Long, you're the BA here. You know, you wouldn't say you're running this city, or supposed to be running this city. And you're not. This city is out of control. This is a lawless city. There is no one following the rules here, apparently. Because it's multiplying. You have one person doing one thing, they do it, they get away with it, they feel like they can do something else. And I got to tell you, I've never seen a squatter in an apartment building. Uh, it's just amazing how so much gets away in this city. So this is dangerous, I don't know who, you know, is in control of this. But I think this also contributes to the amount of fires that we are experiencing in this city. There are a lot of fires in this city. I am so tired of hearing these fire trucks running up Ellison Avenue, across the memorial. So I want to know, who is responsible for what? Where do they need help at? What, what, what can we do differently collectively? Because the onus is on you guys. I don't, I really want to hear from you, Kathleen, I really do. I really want to hear from you, because I'm disappointed in you and say it. Y'all are running this city, y'all are running it to the ground.
Thank you. No more speakers, right, Madam?
There are no one else in the public portion?
Second.
Roll call? The Councilman, Councilman Davila? Councilman Davila closed?
I move, I move to close and second by Councilman Mendez.
Yes.
Okay. Continue, Mr. President?
Yes, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call to close the public portion of the regular meeting of May 11, 2021. Councilman Abilizzi?
Pass.
Councilman Davila?
Uh, to Mr. Coleman, uh, you know, I, I know that he's speaking right now to the BA. Um, I will say this. In the place where Mr. Coleman lives, I believe is a private, uh, building. I understand what you're talking about and, and clearly, the outside, the sidewalks, uh, need to be attended by our city, by our officials, by our, I'm sorry, by our police department. But I would also probably put in an email and address the landlord of the building because there probably needs to be some type of security. Um, I work right around the corner from that building and I understand exactly what he's saying. Because if they can come into the college, there's an area in, in, where's that, an open area? And they sit there, they do number one, number two, number three, they do absolutely everything. So to Mr. Coleman, before I will, I just need you, I, I would definitely recommend to address the landlord, okay?
They say they can't do anything, that's another thing. Are there contradictions going on or not? Can someone confirm that?
Oh, I don't know, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm on my vote, I, I just wanted to address it to say that I think we need to work collaboratively. Because it is, I know that is a private building and what you're talking about is inside the building. And whatever is from the sidewalk out, that is the responsibility of the city. But in terms of the inside of the building, that is something that I think that needs to be addressed with the landlord to get some type of security in, in, in that entrance area. I, I work right around the corner from you, so I clearly, you know what you're talking about. Uh, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Kalik?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We heard from the residents today. There's, as a councilman, member, there's so much we could do. Everything is lies on the administration and the mayor's office. They're the one who run the police department, DPW, every department out there. The city is ran by the administration. We hear your concern and we, we, only thing we could do is, we could let the administration know, this is what's going on. This is the complaint I got from here or there. That's the only thing we could do. Please do understand the limited things that, as a council member, we could do. That's all I'm going to say, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez?
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. And just before my vote, I, I think that, you know, it's, I would like to encourage more residents that, that are going through this, um, whole violence, um, situation in our community to speak up. I mean, this is something that is happening in our community, it's a reality that we're living on. And I think that we could find excuses to any problem. But I, I, I think the time for us to say, you know why, enough is enough is now. We're losing so many lives, there's shooting every day in our community. So what is the plan? I think that, as some of my colleagues mentioned, it's the administration's responsibility to put a plan together, say, what are we going to do to stop this? It's great to see more people coming out and speak up. Because we definitely need a plan. As the council members, uh, in, in my personal case, and I know a lot of my colleagues, they now, they not only calling the director. Sometime, there's one and two o'clock in the morning, I'm calling the radio room, I'm driving around the city. Because the lack of response is so big, the, and the level of frustration, it's so high when it comes to just waiting and waiting and nothing happened that sometimes we, you know, just go around and, and, and hit the road and see, how can we help? So I, I, I think for all our viewers there, uh, we are the governing body, but we have to continue fighting and putting pressure on the administration to make sure that they put a plan together to bring safety into our community. Because a lot of the incident that are happening out there, they not, you don't see that in the newspaper every day. And, um, to the last speaker about the potholes and the situation, I'll give you my personal number. Send a text with the address and the location, I'll send it to DPW tomorrow. And I'm, I'm in constant communication with the director. Uh, so I will send the picture and the address to make sure that they, that they take care of that. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez?
And so, uh, we had so many speakers on tonight and so much has already been stated. But I want to put it on the record, and I went in the hall and I spoke to Ms. Martin. Uh, the street that she was referring to has already been approved by this council for repaved. So I think the administration, I gave her that information. Uh, she talked about the trees and being trimmed, that's something that I made a recommendation when it came to this council and it was a small amount, I can't even remember the dollar amount, it was so small, to cut a certain amount of trees. And I said, "We should do a full assessment because we have oversized trees all over the city." And I think, um, you can go back on the record, and I said, "Going up by East Side Park, by that same bridge, the trees are almost kissing each other." So if you go back in record, you'll see, I told her that item has already been, um, given to the administration. To, uh, Mr. Ellis, congratulations on raising a wonderful daughter and being able to get another chance. I don't say second chance, because if it was second, a lot of us would have never, um, made it, right? We probably got 50 million. But, um, your location, I know the administration, I saw Madam BA writing it down to ensure that we get, um, that location paved, um, and taken care of. And Mr. Um, Itif, thank you so much for your diligence on continuously coming. But I also want to say, when it comes to some of those issues, we can reach out to community improvement, make a report, you can call, you can email, and they can send some inspectors. Um, and depending on which issue, we have our, uh, new zoning inspector, congratulations, uh, Commissioner, for, uh, what you're doing. But you send it to the inspector, you send it to them, it could be anonymous or just send it directly to them. They'll send someone out and they give the, the owner a notice and they have time to fix it or they'll be fine. So I just want to put that on the record. Um, and I'm sure, I think I got everyone, um, that spoke on tonight. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Village?
Madam Clerk, thank you, uh, you know, uh, some remarks have been made on requests. I just want to know, Madam BA, uh, I know Councilwoman Mendez stated that she sent an email uh, to you with some requests regarding Southheart, the street that I live. Okay, please, can you forward it to me? Uh, also, or forward to me, what time that request was done? Normally, when I request something and it's pertaining another ward, um, I tag, uh, that council member, that ward, or if it's a large or whatever. Uh, you, I, I have to, especially when it's concerning where the street that I live. Now, uh, I want the viewer to look, this is all the cameras on my house. Okay? I requested, since I got elected into this office, first of all, to put two spotlights, 2,000 watts, that hits all the way around Southheart and goes all the way down Sealy Street. Okay? It's real bright, it looks like a stadium. Now, on top of that, I spoke to the district to put new LED lights on the East Side High School to make sure that the, 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 the grounds of East Side High School don't look too dark. Okay? Um, last but not least, you know, I could prove you with my phone, in seven days, 15 calls to dispatch to address issues, not only in the Southheart Street, all the way around my ward. Now, I want the administration, because, you know, I want the administration to, to listen to this and my colleagues could agree with it. Okay? Probably they're going to say, "Wow." So let me, let, let me tell the, 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 the viewers out there. If you are frustrated, we are double frustrated. Because sometime, we turn ourselves as messengers for the community. We relay message that you give us. We cannot tell the administration, "You need to do this." I had a situation in Southheart. The street that I live. Okay? And I sent it to a high-ranked police officer in the city of Patterson. And this is what I received back. Unfortunately, and sorry my, the way I speak, unfortunately, sir, okay, I was advised by the deputy chief and the chief that all requests for service by councilperson had to go through central dispatch or through the director's office due to the Funkman Act concerns. My apologies. In other words, Council President, please, because when they come here and attack the council because we're not doing our jobs, the high ranks of the police department put a roadblock on us. So, the administration had to get a form, a plan, that the communication that we are trying to give them is for the quality of life of the city of Patterson. Not put us roadblock of things that concern all of us. And once again, probably I have a bullet in my head or a name, a bullet with a name. But I got elected to serve and I love what I do and I go represent my ward the right thing. Last but not least, a long time I don't take this out. God bless you, God bless you, God bless you. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman, thank you, we are closing the public portion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I just want to say to, um, to a couple of the speakers, with Camille Black. Camille Black has been part of the community for such a long time, especially around school six. And, um, and I just want to say to Camille, I know it's rough. Um, but you, but I say we must still hang in there. We got to do our best to hang in there to, to try to make change. Change can come when you, when you come together. Um, also to you, Mr. Coleman, um, I've seen you, we talk on the phone, you care, you came to the city and you care. And that's what people needs to hear, that you care about what's going on and how we can, can make things better. We got to make it better. It can't, it can't get, you know, and all of us are in jeopardy sometimes. When I go home tonight, it's at one or two o'clock in the morning, leaving council meetings, you know, I got to make sure that the man that look out for me is not here no more. So I have to make sure that, I, I call my kids to, when I pull in my driveway, that they know, because a couple of times, I came home at one o'clock and somebody's walking up my driveway to talk to me about a cab being parked on another street or something. They know what time I leave and what time I come, you'd be surprised of, of what's, what's happening around here. So, but I still say, God is going to watch over us for those who got the good heart. For those who got good heart, he's going to watch over us to see that we, and I just want to say, we all got to hang in there. Mr. Coleman hanging there. Camille Black hanging there. You know, Regana hanging there. You know, it's easy to say hang in there, but you still must try your best to hang in there. So, I just want to say that. Uh, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So many items, so many issues. I don't even know where to start. The, the, uh, one of the most disappointing things, factors is, it can't just be you. You can't possibly be the only one that can see all of the issues that's taking place. The number of people sleeping on private property, the number of people defecating on private property, the number of, the, 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 the crime rate that's increasing exponentially. Like, it cannot just be you, it can't be, it can't just be me. All of the things you come here before this council, this municipal council to complain about, we all see it. The cleanliness of the city, or should I say, the dirtiness of the city, the, uh, the conditions that we're forced to live under. It can't just be the few people that come here. We're entitled to certain services, we're entitled to certain conditions. And we're being denied entitlements. It's funny, because I, I heard well before I ever paid any attention to any political, uh, nonsense, I, I used to hear, um, then Councilman Jones say that all the time. Like, "We're entitled to entitlements." You know, so to Ms. Black, you know, um, I'm going to make sure, I don't know if any of the council members want to make a contribution to the money that she lost. I mean, the administration, God knows, they have a, the mayor has this slush fund that he, he raises hundreds of thousands of dollars for, that should be an automatic. Madam BA, I know one, one of the young ladies, uh, I'm sorry, it was Mr. Coleman that asked for you to respond. If you can, I'm just curious as well, because the resident posed this question. There is apparently, which I, I don't know, because I don't do searches for nonprofits. Apparently, there's a nonprofit that's registered under your name that has the address of this, of this building. And if you can, I don't know if Council President's going to allow you to address the, the public and some of the concerns. I would like for you to put that on the list of concerns, because that's something that was stated to me. And, uh, that's a bit unsettling to me, that there's a nonprofit, another nonprofit that was established that, under your hand, that has the address of this, of 155 Market Street. But with that being said, um, you know, I, I'm kind of discolored right now. So my, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Abilizzi, you passed earlier for closing the public portion.
Thank, thank you, uh, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome, sir.
And before I, I vote, I just want to, I guess, thank my colleagues. I heard the sixth ward, you mentioned plenty of times, you know, we sit here quietly, listen. And, uh, thank my colleagues, I guess, for stating how great this sixth ward is. I'm proud as a councilman, I guess I'm doing something right, along with the partners that I work with. But I hear about all this police presence. Somebody stated, "Oh, the police is in the sixth ward." Please, where are they? Because if you ask my constituents, they request police presence nonstop. So I just want to remind everyone, you hear about sixth ward, none, there's no facts. You know, when I call the police, they tell me, "Councilman, we can't put police presence in that-" You know, when I call the police, they tell me, Councilman, we can't put police presence in that area because we're having hotspots and there's shootings there. And I say, you know what, I, we respect that. I tell my constituents that. I say, you know what, we, we're dealing with this on the other side of town. We get that all the time. My constituents call the police department, they say, we got other things to worry about right now, that's on the, the low end. All the time, we get that. That's what happens at sixth ward. But I want to remind everyone, the sixth ward, we're part of the city of Patterson. My residents probably pay most of, a, a big chunk of the taxes that come out of the sixth ward. The sixth ward does not have many nonprofits, not, not many tax-exempt properties. Most of our property owners are paid full shares of taxes. So they're entitled to get the services from the city. And I, and I thank my colleagues for mentioning to my constituents um how great the sixth ward is. And we're gonna work hard. You know why it's great? Because my constituents hold me accountable day in and day out. I got 25 text messages last night between 11:30 and 1:00 AM. Guess about what? School 25 gate was open. They watch their neighborhoods, they hold me accountable. It could be the little thing or a big thing. From a shooting that occurred a couple of weeks ago on, on a residential corner where five people were struck, that happens in the sixth ward, and they hold me accountable. And I hold the administration accountable. And I work to get things done. That's my message. That's my, my, the way I work is to get things done. I don't care who's my partner, what agency, and thank you again, my council colleagues. I, I want you guys to come to my next Quality of Life meeting, whoever mentioned that we have such police presence. You guys could present. You guys will be on my agenda to present, to let my residents know that we have such great police presence in my ward. My vote is yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President?
So I, I was one of the residents that called your aide, uh, just to ask why the, the school 25 gate was closed.
You're one of twen-, you're one of 25, Councilman, no way.
That's right. So I, I just want to have, ask a general question. So, so Madam BA, I know you have a big city to run, and it's not just you by yourself. You have other directors. But let, let me ask you a simple question. I noticed that one time, we started complaining, maybe a year, a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, about early road closures, right? You guys stopped for a little bit. What would it take for the people that are supposed to be enforcing many of the, of our ordinances not to break it? That should be a simple answer. I, I just don't understand. It, it's just, it's just a disrespect. And then, and then I often hear, the minute that we flip and, and we don't work with the administration is that we don't want to work with you. But you know what? We were elected to make change, and we know the city could change. But we need to change the culture, and it gotta start, you know, we say the people's, no, it's gotta start here in the administration. You have the police, the police are there. The ones that are supposed to be enforcing this, they're the ones that are contributing to this. They show up at seven, we know emergencies, all the time. Well, last, last month, we spent over an hour here talking about the situation with the taxi companies. Madam BA, we asked if you could allow some of those inspectors to work at night. And I happened to call one of the inspectors, oh, we have to work overtime. Overtime, the police is killing the overtime year after year, more than ever. And you're gonna tell me that a little inspector that, that, well, I didn't mean no disrespect, but an inspector that make a little salary compared to some of this police that make over 100 plus, 100,000 plus, why, why haven't, you know, we, we told you our concerns. We gave you a possible solution, and they still not out there working. It's, it's we, everything. We submit recommendation, it's like, I'm not gonna speak for you, but sometimes we feel like, oh, the council don't know what they're doing with the smart ones here. And this is something that I heard when I took office three years ago. There was members of this administration, again, rumors, that were saying that, they were not saying good things about the council body. And that was back then, we're uh, at the beginning. Um, you believe they still saying it, Councilwoman? Which is not, it's not, it's not good. We could pass comments about a lot of this administration too. Uh, and, and when we pass comments, it's holding you guys accountable. It's nothing personal when we pass the comments, because we see that, what is happening out there. Um, I'm gonna vote on this, and then I wanna, I wanna know those two questions. I wanna keep it simple, just those two simple questions, two simple things that could be addressed right away. Uh, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna vote yes to give them an opportunity to answer my, my two questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the vote is nine in favor, none against. The public portion is now closed.
Before we go into the uh, regular um,
Agenda.
Agenda items, just those two things quickly, uh, road closures and the taxi, taxi inspectors.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Regarding road closures, that is something that we do enforce. The one that Councilwoman Jackson sent today, that was a county road and a county road closure. Corporation Council had a conversation with County Council today, and we're trying to figure out why they weren't following um, or that we were not aware um of the time. Because as we checked with our engineer, it was not one of our closures.
Was the sheriff officer working there or the police?
I do not believe it was one of ours. That's what, that we were told by the chief and by the engineer.
Do you mind answering this question? When did you start enforcing it? Because I, I could recall uh talking to my, one of my council colleagues, they're making fun of me, that the, the roads are, um, to my colleagues, I guess, um, improving uh the relationship between the companies and, 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 and their city, um, asking them, you know, that, that is okay for some roads to be done, um, but those were violated a while back. So I'm wondering, when did you start enforcing it again?
Council President, I do know that there are different categories within the ordinance, and I'll, I can let Corporation Council speak to that, and that's where the enforcement comes in.
So you know, you know what's great, Council colleagues, could we just grab that ordinance and put it like in black and white? Because there, there is always a way that, it is, but there always find a, a, a way to interpret it. I am gonna let her finish. Go ahead. And, and number two, before you go, Corporation Council, the taxi inspectors. That way, we could just finish it up with the Corporation.
Sure. For that one, I, I have not denied any overtime. I had asked both the director and the taxi director to provide me with a plan for what they wanted, and I haven't received that yet.
I could appreciate that, but let, let's make sure they do it though, because we waste, we waste our time here. And we're getting paid as council members, right? We bring the, the, the concerns of the people to you. We sometimes give you possible solutions, but it's unacceptable not to do anything. And I think you agree, and you, you most likely agree with that. Uh, Corporation, go ahead, I'm sorry.
One, one last thing. Can I just answer Councilwoman Jackson's question? That's the, I think he's referring to the Friends of Patterson Parks, which we incorporated as a nonprofit as a city, but it's a city, you know, loosely affiliated with the city. And that's why we, they're, the three at-large council people have appointments on it, and that's why it's using City Hall's address.
Got it. Um, Corporation Council.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council President. So um, Councilmember uh, Jackson did identify an issue this morning. Uh, I immediately liaised with my counterpart at the county. Uh, we believe it was a county road. I also spoke with our law enforcement executives. Um, I was reassured that this issue would not be happening going forward on that county road. And I asked Councilman Jackson if the issue does persist, to let me know immediately. So we addressed that. I've also reinforced to our law enforcement executives here about um, the requirement that road closures not happen prematurely, and that there needs to be respect for the community. And I was assured that that would also be carried out as well. So other than that, I have nothing further to add unless anyone else has any questions.
I have one question, Council President.
Just, just one.
Council President.
So very quickly, Council President, in response to that, because there were two locations that I sent. And to, to, just acknowledging my ignorance, I was unaware that Lafayette Street was a county road. So I did follow up with the freeholder and the county engineer. The response that I got back from, from, from one of the individuals is that if whenever they, the county does work, they prohibit work to happen before 9:00 AM. And they, and they said, the only reason they have these occurrences is because the city allows it with city, city officers. The second road, which Councilwoman Cottin, you may be able to help me, is off of the bridge to the right in front of uh, the Blue Palace. That's not a county road. That road was closed at 7:30 AM. Now Lafayette Street, the, the contractor took it upon himself before the officer even got there. There was a school bus, because that's part of the reason we made a fuss. Due to COVID, schools are closed now, but it was a school bus that had to make a right turn down Mercer Street, which we all know is a very difficult turn. You have a large bus turning instead of going directly to school uh, down Lafayette Street. So it, it is, it is a, it is a, uh, an issue. The only thing that I would like to point out, Council President, is it's rather disrespectful. And with all due respect to you, Corporation Council, you're just getting here. This is an ongoing issue that's been ignored well too long. And it's, and the, the, you know, the fact that the chief of police responded with that response, that, oh, it's, that's the county road. We have no, no, no purview over that. We all know it is our department that's allowing these infractions. Our department. It's no other department is doing it. Um, it's not, uh, it doesn't happen where county officers are there. And it definitely doesn't happen outside of Patterson, on other county roads where the sheriff's department is, is on those jobs. They don't allow that. Patterson is the only place where the lawlessness, I just watched children had their bikes confiscated in, in, near Perth Amboy. And the officers talked about, you know, people, we have people riding illegal bikes all over the place. We keep being told Attorney General guidelines, so on and so forth. Lastly, Council President, it is my understanding that there is an agency, I'm not sure if it's the Attorney General's Office or whatever agency is in here doing an investigation on the taxi cab scenario because of the lack of enforcement, because of the lack of assertiveness. And I, I think that the council deserves to know if there's an agency that's in fact in the city doing an open investigation on whether or not these uh meters have been properly maintained, serviced, and making sure. Because what that does, Council President, is puts us in duress. Can you imagine the countless number of passengers that rode in taxi cabs that their meters weren't properly um, uh, serviced and/or adjusted? That's gonna, that leaves us open to litigation. So it is the responsibility of the administration to make sure that that enforcement agency is doing their job. But here we are now, because of a, a resident has raised these concerns, there's an open investigation that's being carried out by another agency, which is gonna leave us vulnerable for another lawsuit.
Council President.
We're not, we're not gonna continue with the discussion. That's not on the agenda. I just had two questions, um, and they were answered. Um, if you want to continue it in the workshop, we could do that. Uh, let's do number 26, Madam Clerk.
Oh, yes, Mr. President. Next item is item number 26, Resolution, number 18, the 37th anniversary of Radio Vision Christiana. This is sponsored by Councilwoman Velez, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Davila, Council President Rivera, Dr. Mims, and Councilwoman Mendez, and Councilwoman Cottin. City Council Resolution 21232.
Moved by Councilwoman Mendez, second by,
Councilwoman Velez was first.
Councilmembers, I can only say one word at a time, so give me some time. So second by Councilwoman Velez, Councilwoman Davila, Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Yes.
Is, is it a motion that comes from an Mendez?
Mendez, uh, Mendez moved the,
If I may, Madam Clerk, I'll give the, the courtesy to Councilwoman Velez to move the resolution, to continue moving on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mendez.
Thank you. Okay, and second by Dr. Mims and Councilwoman Mendez?
Correct.
Councilwoman Mendez, you're seconding?
And Davila.
And Councilwoman Davila. Okay, roll call to approve item number 26. Councilwoman Abdeleziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
I'd just like to say, this is um, congratulations to um, Radio Vision Christiana. They're in my ward on Broadway. You know, they did a nice makeover in front of the building. If you ride through here, you'll see how nice, um, they put up the nice wall. And probably once every other week, I see them distributing food. Um, a tractor trailer would come in from somewhere. Um, they would be distributing food. So I just want to say, congratulations on the anniversary, 37 years. It's 37th, so that is just absolutely wonderful. So with that being said, thank you, councilmembers, um, for including me on this resolution, which is the right thing to do since it's in my ward. We always gotta learn how to do the right thing. With that being said, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davila?
This resolution um is, is, you know, all the things that we do in the city are important, uh, but definitely this one really touched the heart very deep. Councilwoman Velez, thank you so much for always being on top of this and their anniversary. When they first started and they came to Patterson, my mom was there. And how nice, you know, that Mother's Day just, uh, this past Sunday. Um, it's been six years since she went to heaven, and this radio station was a very, very important um, um, means of getting the word of God out there and for our Latino community for the most part. But I believe that there, there's some other entities that they also address. But, you know, my mom was there when they did campaigns, um, esa campaña de fuego pentecostal. So, you know, I just want to congratulate Radio Vision Christiana. En sus 37 años de aniversario, estando en la ciudad de Patterson. Para mi mamita en el cielo, que yo sé que esto es algo que tú definitivamente estuvieras ahí celebrando. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, uh, and through the chair of Corporation Council, uh, and the, the second to last, whereas, I believe, I could be mistaken, I believe there's a small typo.
Yes.
It says uh, 24 per day. I believe that should be 24 hours per day.
Correct.
To the entire Caribbean region. Um, just wanted to make note of that. I don't know if that needs to be corrected, but uh, especially if this is a, a, a resolution that's being passed throughout all of these countries, and I'm sure we want to make sure that there's no mistakes. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kavik?
Congratulations, Radio Vision Christiana, on your 37th anniversary. My vote is yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk, and also I'd like to congratulate Radio Vision Christiana on their 37th anniversary. Uh, very active, right on Broadway in the city of Patterson, in the heart of the fourth ward. Muchas felicidades para Radio Vision Christiana en su 37º aniversario, llevando la palabra de Dios a esta ciudad y al mundo. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Mims?
To Radio Vision Christian, um, Broadway, I want to commend the owners and all of the um, different um moderators that you've had on your radio station. One of the things that I always appreciated about uh, this, this entity for a very, very long time is that you opened your doors to every ethnicity. It wasn't about one particular, it's, it's been about every, every person. And when there were times when we needed to have space to teach and do workshops, you opened your doors for that. So to that, I'll forever be grateful. Thank you, Councilwoman Velez, for including my name on this great, um, this great resolution. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
Um, thank you to the uh, one of the members of the board of Radio Vision Christiana, to reaching out, uh, to myself. Let me, let me say, they have 37 years operating from Patterson in the same spot. Um, when I came to Patterson 35 years ago, I hosted a radio show there uh called La Voz Missionera. And uh, it was a blessing in that time when I was participating in every Sunday in that, in that radio show. And not only that, you know, they reach out tremendous. Um, one of the uh, AM uh dials of, of radio that you could hear clear uh in other countries from Patterson. And every, every time they say from Patterson, the name of Patterson is being, um, is being named. So uh, congratulations to Radio Vision Christian. And um, and I want to say thank you to um, Madam Clerk, the secretaries, because when I requested the biography of, of Radio Vision Christian, um, they did a tremendous job with Harry Savalo to translate all the Spanish to English. So um, thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, to uh, look into that typo. I saw it too, and I made the correction here before you mentioned it. And they will uh, address it to corporate council to, to fix it before uh, printing the hard copy on it, uh, the original copy. So those that um, listen to uh, 5:30 AM, okay, nine in the morning, 5:30 AM, listen to good words, you know, um, and if you don't understand what they're saying in Spanish, I know that somehow in faction is gonna get to you. Radio Vision Christiana merece esto y más. Dios me lo bendiga a todos y celebremos los 37 años de existencia en la ciudad de Patterson. Uh, I just wanna say this, and lastly, Council President, um, I believe you're gonna receive, and I don't know, everybody will receive an email of the celebration is gonna be in their parking lot, um, um, sometime in the May 22nd. Uh, so you guys could come down, sorry to use the word guys, my colleague could come down and, um, and, and celebrate with them. So, saying that, felicidades, my vote is yes. Que viva Jesucristo.
Mr. President? So congratulations on your 37th anniversary. It shows a lot of perseverance, you know, 37th year, it is easy to start something, but stick to it. For 37 years, it means a lot. Um, I noticed how anxious, uh, a lot of my colleagues were to second this, this resolution, uh, to, to be part of the motion. Um, and, and he says a lot about the entity and the people that are part of it. But I just wanna say one more thing to my council colleagues, you know, maybe I'll make you laugh, maybe not. But I just hope that many years from now, that they don't, they don't measure the effectiveness of council members based on who move what. Because Councilman Abdalaziz, Kalik and I will be in trouble. Um, I just hope that, all of, Councilman Jackson and Councilman Jackson, everybody else fights to second.
I got all you guys beat, I don't even move anything.
So, my, Madam Clerk, I just had to throw that jab in there, uh, my vote is yes.
I don't even move items that are sponsored.
I included you, Mike. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is nine in favor, none against, item number 26 is hereby adopted.
Let's try to finish the agenda 26.
We have the consent item, Mr. President.
Let's just do the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Next item is our consent agenda items. All matters listed on a consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council, and will be enacted by one motion. The items listed on the consent agenda are number six through 24. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by the request of any council member, and if so, removed will be treated as a separate matter.
So move it.
Second.
That was Councilwoman Davila moved?
She's batting, Councilwoman Davila is batting like 400. All right, Councilwoman Davila, you have second by Councilman Mendez, Mims, and Velez. Half of the council. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President, roll call on item six through 24 on the consent agenda, Councilman Abdalaziz.
Council President, I think the, the people that second and move the item do not get their two minutes to vote. Let's see how many people take that off, right? My vote is yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Davila?
Council President, it's been eight years, okay? My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
We got a great sergeant at arm in our meeting, Council, my vote is yes.
Mr. President?
I'll second that, yes.
The vote is nine in favor and none against, item six through 24 on the consent agenda is hereby adopted.
Madam Clerk, let's take, uh, before, before we go to the first reading ordinances, let's take number 30.
Yes. Next item is item number 30, resolution authorizing a discounted sale of a tax lien assignment for block 115, Lot 1, located at 6 dash 34 Piercy Street on the procedure set forth in NJSA 54 colon 5 dash 11, 114 point 2B. Final resolution 21-236.
So move. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalik, uh, discussion, I have a question for Corporation Council.
So do I.
Me too.
What, what does the, this, he says it in the word, in the resolution. He, he, this gives authorization to the, to the tax collector to basically, uh, entertain this, this.
Discount sale.
Discounted sale. Once, if, if the council approves this action, she has to proceed with this?
It's a good question, um, Council President. There is some tension between what is mandatory and what is permissive. Under the Faulkner Act, she's an employee of the administration, and there's a clear delineation of authority between the legislative body and, uh, the administration. And the legislative body does not and cannot control employees. Um, with that being said, should council authorize this, and the tax collector decide to then, uh, proceed with this discounted sale, there would be several steps that would have to take place, culminating ultimately with any sale falling on the mayor's desk, at which point the mayor could or could not decide to sign that assignment.
Council President?
Council President, I ask for the floor.
Co- conversely, um, to the extent that, you know, the administration has made its decision to move forward with itself foreclosing on this, uh, property, and the administration has deemed it to be the most fiscally responsive way forward, we would also need a resolution from the council authorizing that as well.
So I wasn't, uh, uh, thank you for sharing that, because I wasn't gonna say anything else, I was gonna go to my next colleague, you know, to the next speaker, but it's interesting how this situation between us and the administration needs to change. It, it, I, I noticed, and people call me all the time, Flay, why you doing this? I noticed that the administration never hears the outcry from the council. We need to do things like to force a hand. We saw it with the sewer, um, analysis, uh, we see it all the time with different things. Like, we have to do, make drastic moves in order for the administration to act. Now, I'm encouraged to hear that at least the administration is thinking of doing something with the property.
We're not thinking, we've already started the process.
Correct.
We've engaged council.
Let me just add this last comment. So, Councilman Jackson, when, when, when you called me the other day, and Ben David, the other attorney, and the tax collector were in the office. Ben David, Ben David.
Who's there also?
Hmm, he was there when he was talking, no, he wasn't there when he spoke to me. He came after we finished the conversation. But Ben David basically stated that both actions could be taken place at the same time. Uh, is that correct?
Uh, I'm not sure what you mean by both actions.
The foreclosure proceeding and the lien sale.
No, no, they, those are mutually exclusive options, because if we're, if we're proceeding with our own foreclosure and we're gonna take possession of the property, I don't think, uh, we also have the option to then sell something that we're foreclosing on.
It makes sense, I, I'm just playing here, I'm not gonna say dumb, but that's what happens when, when there is no communication and department heads allow their staff to entertain discussions. And I think the way he put it was that even both things could, what he basically meant is, if we decide to act and put this through, the administration could decide, we just gonna go with the foreclosure proceeding. That's basically what he said.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's.
That's basically what he said.
That's different than, than pursuing both of them at the same time.
No, but I mean pursuing is us, us having bo- bo- both actions at the same time, the administration, I guess, would decide later, because ultimately we were told the mayor have to, uh, sign off on it.
That's correct, pursuant to our Patterson Code.
So, for example, even, even if the foreclosure, even if the tax, if the sale is taking place and the administration decides not to pursue it, we could still go through with the foreclosure proceeding. If the, if the mayor decides not to sign it all, sign off on it.
Yeah, we still have to.
Correct, but, but that would be, that would lead to a very inefficient process. To the extent that the administration has already made the decision, and they have, to move forward with the foreclosure process, that would be different than pursuing two things at once, and I think it may not only send a mixed signal to the public, but also lead to some liability.
Agree, but that option, that, that comment shouldn't have ever been passed, is what I'm saying. Um, Javier?
Agreed.
You're the CFO. If you guys are contemplating a foreclosure proceeding, do you have a list of all the other properties that we've been asking for the past three years? Do you have a list of properties that we also wanna foreclose on?
Yes.
Do you have that ready and available for us?
Yes.
Okay, just provide it to the whole council, if you don't mind.
Council President?
Um, Councilwoman Davila, then, uh, Councilman Abdalaziz.
Councilman Velez.
So.
Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Davila, then Councilman Abdalaziz.
What I find like really, um, frustrating with this administration is that you have been asking for this list for quite some time. This conversation about Piercy has over two years, okay? And all of a sudden now that finally it gets on the agenda, the administration now just has, this is the route we wanna go, but no. And I heard Corporation Council say, you know, they also have to come for us when it comes time to put the properties on foreclosure to get approval from the council. So, when I look at what is in front of us, this resolution, this item has been on how many tax liens, sales, assignment sales?
20 years.
You're saying no, Councilwoman Cotton, but it's, it's. Okay, we haven't done absolutely nothing with this property. But now that it's coming before us, now the city decides, oh, we wanna go a different route. It just makes me wonder, you know, and I'm gonna say it straight out. I feel that everything that Councilman Jackson presents to this administration, he constantly gets blocked because it's Councilman Mike Jackson. And it is a shame and it's embarrassing, but then we wanna work together. That's all I'm gonna say.
Councilman Abdalaziz?
Thank you, Council President. So, as always, I do my due diligence when I look at resolutions, I don't look at personalities, I don't look at people, what's going on. So I'm looking at this item here, and I'm gonna be fiscally responsible of what's in front of me. So to my residents in the sixth ward, um, this property hasn't paid taxes since 2006. They owe the city about $2.5 million. So the process is when someone doesn't pay their taxes, guess who picks up their taxes? The people, the taxpayers of this city, the, the great city of Patterson. That is approximately $153,000 a year from 2006 that the taxpayers of this city picked up on this property. Because if someone doesn't pay their taxes, the tax levy still must be funded, and it's funded by the taxpayers. So, since 2006, the taxpayers have picked up $153,000 approximately per year for, for what's owed on this property. Now, what we have in front of us is we could go out to a tax lien sale, someone buys it, I don't know who, minimum bid of $100,000. One person, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Mr. CFO, Jimmy Smith puts in a bid, he's the only one, at $100,000, he gets a tax lien, correct? Correct. And then he starts a foreclosure? Correct. And then he owns the property? Correct. Okay, so the city of Patterson pays $2.5 million for 14 years, right? What do we have to show for? $100,000 check that comes in, we have no property, but we spent $2.5 million, not that this council paid for it, it's the hard work and taxpayers over the fat 14 years that paid $2.4419,380.46. That's not my figures, that's the figures that are here. So, as, as any, I mean, if I were buying a property, right, it's like, you want, you pay for something, you wanna own something. So right now, if we pass this, we could possibly get in $100,000, cuz it's been failed numerous years on liens. We get $100,000, and we give the property to someone else that we already spent $2.5 million. Puts us in the hole for $2.3 million and no ownership. I would hope that the city takes this property, gives us options of what we wanna do. Do we wanna sell it, do we wanna make it a park, do we wanna knock it down, do we wanna clean it? Right now, we don't own it. So, we already invested $2.5 million, I think in the ownership of the city is probably more feasible and fiscally responsible for the residents of the city of Patterson. Or you go out and put it at auction. Pennsylvania Avenue in South Patterson, the county put it up for auction. It was, it's contaminated, it's been dilapidated, broken windows, leaky roofs. The county got $6 million for that building, putting it out to auction. We don't know how much we could get out of this. I, I can rest assure you, we'll probably get more than $100,000. A, a shack, uh, any, you know real estate now, and I don't have to say, we have real estate experts here. I, I mean, people can't buy a, a, a one-car garage for 100, a shed from Home Depot costs a, a couple thousand dollars. So, Council President, that's where I'm looking at it, I don't know what happened in the background, I'm looking at the number of figures that the hard, the hard work and taxpayers have paid in the last 14 years. And the city goes with this, we don't get no ownership of anything.
Council President.
So, good.
Council President.
Hold on a minute, Councilman. So I just have a question of the administration. Because the analysis that Councilman Abdalaziz, uh, just made, uh, yeah, taxpayers end up paying for it because it affects our collection rate, which in turn affect our reserve fund collected tax, which is something we put in the budget that doesn't have an offsetting, uh, expenditure. It's just if we needed 100 million to provide the services or to collect in order to balance the budget, and we only had a 97, 97% collection rate, we have to actually raise 103 million instead of just 100. So that affects our collection rate. But I have a, 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 a specific question to the administration. So, right now, we don't own the property, we just have, we just own the liens, which is the, the, the taxes, the owner didn't pay them. We foreclosed on this property. What is the plan for the property?
None.
Uh, uh, let me tell you why I asked the question. We have other properties, like Leader Die, for example, it's been there for a long time. The situation that we have here is, we all often talk about, and I'm not pushing this or not, all I'm saying is, I told, I told Councilman Jackson today, make your case, or, or not make your case, let's have a discussion on this item, look at the pros and cons, right? Um, and this is what I'm, I'm bringing up, I might look at it a little different from Councilman Abdalaziz. The way I see this is, we have a property that's not paying anything. Let's just say, and this is a public, this is a public auction, so more, more than, you know, as many people could come in and bid on it, right? Doesn't have to go for 100. But let's just say it goes for 100,000, right? Mr. CFO, next year, or next, next quarter, after the foreclosure, the person that's doing the foreclosure proceeding, do they have to pay full taxes on it?
Yes.
Yes. So, so, and again, it's not to try to persuade my council colleagues to vote either way, but there is an item before, before us, and I'm always the person, I don't come here with intent to knock anything down. I come here to try to review what's presented to me. What we look at right now is a, a possibility to put a property back on the tax rolls. Example, the armory, how many years did we owe the armory for? Own, not the tax lien, basically the city of Patterson owned the armory for how many year?
Twenty, a lot, a lot of years.
Any, any, any clues? Could we say over 10 years?
More.
More.
More, we're talking about 20, 20 something years.
So, thanks.
CFO doesn't know that.
Well, he just took over now, he wasn't part of the whole transaction.
He's gonna employ you for.
That's true, but not everything gets discussed.
The city owned it for 20 years.
So, so the point that I'm trying to make is this, we held to a property, and thank God, people complain all the time about developers, but thank God, you know, Charles Florio paid a generous amount for the property. Nobody else wanted to pay that much for that property. Now, it took over, I would say 15, 20 years, the city owning it, right? There was no benefit to the residents at all, no taxes collected. So all I ask from the administration is, all of a sudden now we're doing foreclosure proceedings that I'm, I'm happy that you guys have listened to do some, you know, some foreclosure proceedings, but what is the plan? I wanna hear what is the plan for this property, after you do the foreclosure proceeding?
Council President, I think we, we've talked about this before in a sense of, for a part, for a property like this that is very similar to Leader Die, because the city would own it, we would be able to take advantage of the state programs that allow us to do that LSRP environmental review and get reimbursed for 75% of the cost, which can't be done at the same way by private developers. And so our, our process would follow what we, what you're seeing now with Leader Die. And, and then we'd be at a point where all the information would be out of the table, we'd be able to get the best bid for auction. That is the plan.
So, the, no, well, let me, let me just get a more concise, you know, answer. So the plan is, as soon as the foreclosure proceeding takes place, we're gonna expedite the process to try to clean it up? Or we're just gonna leave it there?
Not necessarily to clean it up, but to get an understanding of what needs to be cleaned. Because like Leader Die, we're not cleaning up Leader Die. We're selling Leader Die with the big LSRP report that shows exactly what needs to be done for Leader Die. So, or we could, maybe there's not a lot, maybe it's something that we could do, we can access other types of funding in order to clean it up, and that jumps our auction value up even higher. We won't know until we get that report back.
So, we're just assuming, we taking an educated. So, we're just assuming, we taking an educated guess that the site is contaminated, basically?
No.
No, it's contaminated.
So there is a report?
There's a report.
Yeah.
It was fire, the fire chief was a part of that, uh, review.
Council President.
All right, I'm going to stop it there. Uh, I could start asking questions on like, uh, Councilman Velez.
Thank you, Council President. So, you know, you mentioned the armory, I know a quite story, uh, from the armory way back, way back, going by, I would say two, two or three administrations. I recall a big sign in the armory before it burned down, say that the city was offering for $800,000. Nobody was interested. You know, the city invested 1.2 million dollars in this contaminating the building, okay, way before it got burned down, okay? Not in top of that, the city in the past administration, okay, uh, got funding to remove tanks that was, uh, still on the armory and contaminated land. I, 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 I saying this, you had a nice developer that say, well, let me pay 20 times what the city, um, have on it. So, and, 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 what was that? And plus, the demolition, uh, cost the city, and we didn't got back nothing with all the rubbish that came out of there, that the demolition company made money out of it too, okay? And removing it, etc., etc. So there was no plan with the armory. Now, a plan came forward, it's going to be, thanks God, in the great fifth ward of Patterson. Now, let's be honest. The city is not capable to curb the crime. There's no plan. The city is not capable probably to remove panhandler from the streets. So I don't think the city has the capability to be re-altered and start doing foreclosures in this property. I agree with Councilman Adelaziz regarding less doing RFP, you know, to make sure, forget what happened in the past. This is a new administration trying to deal with something that should be done way back. So, my colleague just stated, soon as this is, uh, go to bid, let the best bidder come down and offer probably more than you guys starting to offer. That the city is capable to do one property to do the bid, of course. But let have participation. I want to, I want to be the city, the, the person that say, we gave the opportunity to everyone out there to come and bid in this pro, in this property. Let them know, and they know, the condition of the property. This had been, uh, advertised for, for, for many years and different ways. Everybody knows what's going on in that property. But let's give the participation to everyone, and let have the best bidder come in and say, you know what? I know I'm getting a piece of junk, but I want to give this type of money. Because I know the city is in stress, the city have not doing nothing, but we want to help the city. And probably you're going to have generous people out there participating and making sure that, um, that, um, they bid on it. And, and I believe that as soon as they do it, they probably have a plan on it that probably they say is going to benefit uh, uh, the city in different ways. So, I'm inclined more to go to open process that everyone participate. I don't agree that the city has the luxury time and luxury time and spent money, like she stated, that they're going to find, if we ownership, we're going to start doing the studies, how contaminated it is, how much it will cost from federal grants to, uh, funding from the state to clean it, and then offer it in a, in a, in a process like that. So I think that, you know, the city should worry about other things in one year from now than, um, being a Realtor and trying to, uh, uh, do what the people probably decide to do is move forward in a, in a general bid on it and have everyone participate. I believe a room will be full with people that are interested and making sure that they will bring something that the community and the boards will approve to that site and purchase street. It's been abandoned for many years, and the city had not even moved to move for foreclosure when they had the tools in that time, so they don't have the tools at this time. So, uh, that's, I just want to say that, um, in this, in this case.
Council President?
Councilman Mendez.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I just have, just have one question through the chair to Madam BA. Madam BA, uh, where do we get in the, the minimum bid of $100,000? Where are the numbers coming from? Out of what figure we're getting that number out?
Thank you, Councilman, for that question. I'll answer that since, uh, my department drafted this. Um, it is my understanding that Councilman Jackson had requested, uh, a member of my department to draft this and provided that $100,000 number. Councilman Jackson can then correct the record, because that's my, that's my third-hand, uh, account, but if he knows better, then I'll defer to him.
So, Councilman Mendez, to the point, and I don't want to interrupt your time, because I'm sure you have other questions. Corporation Counsel, with all due respect to him, he wasn't here during that process. The former CFO, because from my perspective, we should have been rendering this, uh, this, this property for a dollar. This property has been on the sales list and the discounted sales list for as little as a few hundred thousand dollars for many, many years. It's been on a reduced s, li, uh, sales price for a very long time, and no one has ever been willing to take a, a shot at it because, as Councilman Velez pointed out, the armory, the, um, the cleanup for the armory was 1.2 million dollars. So most investors know that the, the DEP and all the environmental things involved, it could possibly run a million dollars just to clean it. That's not to repair it and to bring it up to, to code. So my suggestion was a dollar. The then, then the CFO, along with, uh, one of the employees in the legal department prior to, and in fact, the former Corporation Counsel also weighed in on it. They, they, they studied the law. There was a former case, and Councilman, um, uh, Council President is more clear on the municipality that this case set precedence in with this particular item can be handled this way. Uh, what's the municipality? We talked about that.
Rockaway. Actually, actually, I don't know, but I, I know, I know the previous CFO. Because this was brought up maybe two years ago.
Correct. So there was a calculation?
In fin, in finance.
Yeah, so there was a calculation that was done that March. I, I, I got, you know, I got your information. And that, that's what gave us the lowest possible number. So now, so this is my rationale, and this is what I do, this is what, this is what I do.
Council, before you continue. They were supposed to, the day you guys called me from, um, the tax collector's office to try to get this on the agenda, and, and Legal was there. They were supposed to do research to see what was the minimum, to see what was the minimum requirement. Um, I don't know where that stands.
The tax collector did that research. So, so, so Council President, what we have, what we had at the table, it's going out, you know, and for the sale of this lien for, starting $100,000. This is what I see of this. I mean, and it's, it's sad because, I mean, at the end, the taxpayer, they are the one paying the price for the mistake and, and the lack of, uh, response from this administration. We all know that, I mean, real estate is booming, it, it's just incredible how the market is moving, how the market is going. But the way I see this is that we, if we go out and put this property, uh, this lien for sale, whoever it get is going to start paying taxes immediately in this property. The administration have not done the, the due diligence to look at and see, uh, you know, what is the contamination site, what is going out, they have not given us any details. And all of a sudden, the mayor decide to, to conduct a foreclosure on this specific, specific property. So, my recommendation, and I'm looking forward to, I will, I'm ready to move forward with this, uh, to hope that we could put this property back in the tax roll immediately. And my recommendation to the administration is to, if you saw, uh, in a rush of conducting, uh, foreclosure in multiple property, give us a list of all the property in the city, and start doing the work, start conducting the foreclosure. We have a legislation that protect us, that we could definitely immediately start the process of foreclosure in a lot of the property, and that's going to help us. Definitely is going to help us. And, and, and if we talk about plan, we definitely should have a plan. The administration should have a plan with all those property that we have the opportunity to get it. We, we talking about, uh, Leader Die is a lot. And I mentioned, Madam BA, I put this comment in the beginning of a conversation, we were start talking about this property. The only opportunity that we have to bring a middle school to the third ward for that section, which is Riverside section, is by if we take that piece of property and get into a partnership with the school system and build a new school there, we getting more and more people every day to the city of Patterson, Madam BA, and there's no way all the schools around that area, they're over capacity. School 18, the capacity is around 850 student, more or less. It has over 1,200 students. Whoever buy that piece of property, they're going to bring mixed-use property, commercial, residential, but they're going to bring residential to that area. We don't have the schools to allocate those students. I even went to the Board of Education and I asked the Superintendent Eileen Shafer. She told me that she's going to reach out to you to start a conversation, Madam BA. If you could please entertain that conversation with the Board of A, because if we really wants to do the right thing for Patterson, we have to plan, and that's the perfect spot for us to bring a middle school to alleviate what's going on in the area. A lot of the children that are, that live on the Riverside section, they have to, we have to send it in the buses to all the schools around the city. All those children, a lot of the kids. You go by East 19 and 3rd Avenue, you're going to see more than 25 to 30 buses lining up, getting all the students out of the Riverside section and sending the student to the other side of the town. Now, you have Leader Die, you got the perfect spot to build a beautiful state-of-the-art facility. School 18 has over 100 years old, it's a museum. It's not a school. That, if we don't have a full kitchen on School 18, it just, it's a museum. So now, if we have the opportunity to build a brand-new facility for our children, why we always thinking about was putting that, putting that out in the market to get maybe $2 million to put on the budget? We thinking about now, we're not thinking about the future, Madam BA. If we really thinking about the future of the city of Patterson, with every piece of property, and listen what I'm telling you, if we really, or the administration is really thinking about the future of this city, with every little piece of property, you should have a plan for. Take Leader Die as an example, and bring that conversation with to the Board of A. We already got the land, and that la, that property used to be owned by the Board of A. Now we have it. This is the perfect time for us to say, you know what? Let's have that conversation, and let's build what we need to build there. Not more apartment, because we have no places to send those children. Which school? There's no school around there. So, that's my recommendation. As a Councilman of the Third Ward, that, uh, property is going to impact tremendously the whole Riverside section and the whole city of Patterson. Let me change that. So, and moving forward, I'm ready to move to number 30, Council President. Thank you for your time. So...
Council Pro...
You want, you want?
Councilman Jackson?
Councilman Jackson having finished, right?
So, one, I would ask all of my council colleagues to please just give me a moment of your attention. Obviously, I'm, I'm going to make an effort to compel you to understand my frustration. So first and foremost, in, with comparison to this property and any other property that we ever discuss, this is probably one of the most challenging properties due to the high level of contamination. So to Councilman Velez's, uh, example, the armory costs us 1.2 million dollars. So when we talk about the amount, I want to start there. I actually said it should go on for a dollar because I want this, I would like to see this corridor improved today, not 10 years from now. Leader Die has been a, a plan in action for the past 15 years, and nothing has happened while we put all of the focus in the Great Falls area. There's other parts of our community that needs attention. So this is something that needs to happen today. If you look at the attention the administration is giving to that area, right next door to Jean's Liquor Store, Councilwoman Cotton, there's an illegal lot that's just been allowed to park dead trucks and all kinds of things in that area. And the administration has done absolutely nothing to make improvements in that area. So for those of, those council members and the administration that want to be fiscally responsible, let me not remind you the sum of $7 million that the hospital was going to owe the city, but we took a break and we gave them a concession and reduced that down to $700,000. That's a reduction of close to $6 million. So we're talking about the potential of selling this property for maybe $500,000, maybe $600,000. If we take a loss for a couple hundred thousand dollars just to get it on the tax rolls today, because taxpayers are looking for relief from today forward, we can't go backwards. When we talk about options, right? I, I, I'm sorry, council members, just please, just indulge me for a very quick moment, because I don't want you to miss some of the things that I'm trying to, uh, present. So Councilwoman Davila, you know, made a comment that it seems that the things that I, that I bring forward, and I, I'll be honest with you, I, I've stopped trying to reach out to the, to, to the administration, because obviously they're not interested. You know, some of you were here when I brought Ray Lewis to the city, who caught a Learjet into Teterboro Airport, came into these chambers and shed tears with young people when he talked about the growing crime rate and the violent crimes in our area, and how we need to put programming in place for job training, job creation, building young men, getting young men off corners. So, at that time, Mayor Joey Torres wasn't interested, and, and this council wasn't interested in supporting it either. So I brought him back to this administration, introduced him to the former BA, who understood the, the, the power of clean energy and all of the things that Ray Lewis is doing in Baltimore City, Maryland, in LA, in Africa, and the impact that he's having on environments such as ours. This administration chose not to support that. I didn't say this is a Mike Jackson initiative. This is Ray Lewis. He's a worldwide, world-renowned figure who's on national TV every day, and this administration chose not to entertain a, a, an avenue of outlet to, to help our community and raise several million dollars a year for our much-needed recreation program. When the presentation with, for the collaboration with Apple for the library was presented, this administration again did not choose to support that. It's not a Mike Jackson, Jackson issue. It's an issue to curb violence and help young people in our community. So when you talk about a plan, Council President, this would be responsible, and Councilman Mendez as well. Because I agree with you, I slightly disagree when we need to make it a school because it removes it from the tax rolls. But if we're going to look to be responsible, we would have our Economic Development Department outline a full plan, right? And do the due diligence on what the community would like to see. We see now that the community is not happy with all the development or the kinds of development. In fact, the numbers at these meetings are as high as they've ever been. Where the community is up in, in arms about some of the things, the lack of planning, so the things that's being allowed. The way you plan this thing is not only do you put forward, you do the research, you poll the neighborhood, you do, you do a study, you go out and you look to see what people would like to see in their, in their area. Then the administration would then bring a full plan forward, take it to the board, take it to the planning board. That way, when they go out to sell it, they have a full plan with board approvals and everything else in, already ready to go. That way, the community has a, a, a way to measure in and weigh in on what is going to happen in their neighborhoods as opposed to a developer coming in and presenting whatever they want. And then we, then we left with no other choice, because we sold them something at a premium. We sell them a property at $3 million, and fortunately, you know, the plan that we saw when you saw Mr. Florio presented in 3D, it was a, it was a phenomenal plan, but we don't know that that's going to happen. If you sell them a, a, a clear slate, they can do whatever they want to. So with that being said, so, relative to the county building that Councilman Adelaziz keeps referring to, there is no contamination there? It's not in the flood plain? It's not on the riverbanks? I, I didn't interrupt. I don't know, understand why I continue to be interrupted. But anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to, you know, you know, drag this on, Council President. Um, you know, the last thing, if you talk about the armory and expenses of the armory, the one... You know, the last thing, if you talk about the armory and expenses of the armory, the one point two to clean, one point four to demo, the fire that we had to put out, we spent a great deal of money on that. And to, just to answer, I'm sorry, council members, please, this is, I'm wrapping now. Just to answer Corporation Council's, um, uh, uh, response. It is possible. It is, not only is it possible, it, it is warranted. Both actions can be initiated simultaneously. Yes, the mayor does have the option of not signing this. I'm asking council members, I'm trying to compel you to support this and allow the mayor, if the mayor chooses not to sign it, then fine, I can live with that. But at least the, the, the members in that community will know that the onus fell on the mayor, and his lack of concern for this area is where it is. But those residents in that area, they, they deserve a lot better treatment than them to have to wait another ten or so years for a foreclosure, and then a plan that's not even already thought out, of which, when you look at the track record of this administration, they failed to render plans and, and, and execute in those other sites. So, I'm, I'm hoping we can move this forward, Council President. Let's take it for the, before vote, I mean...
Sure, let's do that, let's do that.
Council President?
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
I thought, um, um, I just wanna have a question. Councilwoman Mendez, you're Chair of Economic Development, and when was the last time you saw...
It was never presented to our committee, Councilwoman Cotton, no.
No, I mean, wait a second, I'm...
So, 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 council members, council members, don't get me wrong here. When, when does a tax lien sale goes to economic development?
No, I'm just asking a question...
No, but I just wanna know.
Well, okay, I'll let Kathleen speak, and then I'll speak after her.
When?
We're doing a roll call.
Or finance. Roll, roll call, Madam Clerk.
I said...
Yes, Mr. President.
Goes directly to finance.
I mean, like, and, oh, come on, you can't just keep stop cutting people off, like, come on, let me... Kathleen wanna answer the question, I just asked a question, you said it don't have to come, fine, then it don't have to come.
Hold on, it, it went to finance?
That it was on the committee before, I don't remember, that's all.
It went before the committee multiple times.
Where was it? I don't remember, I've been here eight years, tell me when it was on last time.
When Janice, the mayor, when Ruben Gomez...
Council members, I need some, I need some control here, what I'm saying is this.
You got control.
What you're selling here is a tax lien. First, we need to understand what we're voting on. We're authorizing the tax collector, if the council authorizes it, right? Given her the authorization to, to engage in a discounted public tax lien, discounted tax lien, right? This doesn't have to go, since when does the, you know, we're not, there is no proposal being, you know, being submitted here to do any type of development in the property. This is a, a tax, a discounted tax lien authorization. So, could we proceed, Madam, Madam Clerk with the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number thirty for approval, Councilman Abdallah Zee.
I don't remember, I'm sorry.
Thank you, so we got two options here. We can sell the tax lien so a private entity could foreclose on the property and, and own it, or the city of Patterson could foreclose on the property, own it, and sell it for a better bang for their buck. The fiscally responsible thing to do is for us to start the foreclosure process. As stated, I guess administration has started it already, and I could see this is not gonna be where the administration and council is not on the same page. So, as I stated, the city of Pa, the taxpayers have paid about two point five million dollars for this property already. Let's take ownership, put on a public auction, try to get our money that we paid for already, and put on the tax rolls that way, not this way. My vote is no.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I, I sat here and I listened to everyone talk about putting this on. I know that we need to, um, I would wanna start more than a hundred thousand for something that's two million. Start off at five hundred thousand. They said it's been on multiple liens and multiple liens and, I mean, multiple tax sales, and nothing has been done on it. I'm talking, I don't interrupt nobody. I can hear you on the side of my, I can hear you, please stop. Right, and so, um, I think that we can get more, you know, you know what? It's, it's like a battle now, and, and we really shouldn't even be in a battle. We're supposed to be here to serve the constituents, serve you out there, and it's supposed to be both ways. And we need to work both ways. Nobody wants to sign off on this, BA, Corporation Council, nobody wants to sign off. What's, something is wrong, something is seriously wrong, I don't know what it is, nobody's telling me. Well, I don't know what's wrong. If, if, if people know who wants to get this property, start at a hundred thousand, maybe they won't get it at a hundred thousand, maybe it can get up to five hundred thousand. But to, 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 to see that, as they said, it's been here multiple times, it hasn't been here for the last two years. It don't need to be before the community development, it don't need to go before finance. What are you gonna do with it? That's what, and even though it has not been on there, we have multiple properties that have not. So, at this point right now, I cannot support this, and my vote is no.
It is obvious, you know, from the previous conversation, where I'm going and how I'm, I'm going to support putting this item once again on a discounted sale, on a taxing assignment sale, for us to get money back on the roll. I think it's important that we really see the true picture of what's going on here. And this item has been before us numerous times. When I mentioned economic development, I was part of the Economic Development Committee, sat down with the committee and the Director of Economic Development, Mike Powell. And this item was discussed only because he had spoken to someone that possibly wanted to purchase it. That is why we discussed it in economic development. Mike, I wanna support the first ward. I wanna support the fact that you have been pushing for something that I believe we as a council have the authority to do so. And, you know, what bothers me about this is, is that we've been talking about this for quite some time, and now is when the administration decides, oh, but we're gonna do something, we now wanna foreclose. But how long is it gonna take for the foreclosure, then the cleanup, put in all this other money? It's still not gonna be on the tax roll, right? Oh, but we may get more money later. You know, I wanna move forward with this item. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes for item number thirty.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson?
Pass.
Councilman Kalik?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This property has been the eyesore for what, fourteen years or so? And we haven't collected a dime. And if we let our administration go through the foreclosing passes and foreclose on it, we maybe have to wait another ten years or so to get back on the, on, on the tax roll. I think it is a great idea to do a discounted sale, and as soon as possible, put this property on it, on, on the tax roll. And my vote is yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I, I definitely expressed my position about this legislation. It will be a totally different picture if, if, if the administration will have a plan for this. And we all know that this property's been, um, this lien been in sale for multiple time, um, you know, unsuccessfully. Uh, and now we have an opportunity to put it out there for whoever wants to buy and put the property back in the tax roll. Now, uh, regardless of Councilman Jackson before my vote, the difference with Lita Di is that I did my homework on that. The, the Riverside section has been suffering for many years, and one of the biggest challenges that a lot of the family that live around there is that they don't have the luxury and the opportunity to send their kid to the, to that school or to the area. They have to send this kid to any other area around the city of Patterson. So, that situation is impacting the city, the entire city of Patterson, because you have multiple buses traveling around the city of Patterson, putting kids in different sector, in different school. That's the reason why I'm saying that, 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 that opportunity, that conversation need to happen, need to take place. And I've been, having conversation with all the neighbor, the neighbor around there, and they, they hoping to see something like that in that area with some basketball court and parts of the community, because there's no, uh, there's no basketball, we don't, they don't have any way of recreation on that section. You know, so with that being said, going back to this, uh, item number thirty, I look forward to support it, and my vote is yes, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mendez?
So, there's been a lot of discussion regarding this property. We know that there is definitely contamination at this property. Councilman Abdallah Zee's gave a, a great illustration of the taxes and, you know, the disadvantages and advantages. There's been much discussion as it relates to it. But the concern for me is when you have an item that the tax assessor, the BA, Corporation Council, nobody wants to sign off on. That is a concern. When no one wants to sign off on an item, that's a concern. And if it concerns all of those people, it concerns me. So, I have to go with my gut, especially when it comes to the tax assessor. I mean, they're an employee that's been with the city for a while, they've seen things come and go, and I'm, I know they definitely wanna make sure that they sign off on stuff like this. I've been through the property, I know people that worked in that, uh, worked in, inside of the Galaxy Chemical Plant. I know people, I've talked to people in the, in the area. Do people wanna see things, see it done, revitalized? Absolutely, but we definitely have to make sure that we do it the right way. And when I don't, when I see all these people concerned with signing off, I'm telling you, it gives me, uh, what do you call it? The creepy crawlies. So, with that being said, I'm gonna go with my gut on tonight, and my vote is no.
Councilman Velez?
I wanna pass.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, first and foremost, the danger that the residents of Patterson encounter is misguided information, miseducation of the public. It's probably one of the most dangerous things, because we have if, wrong information being disseminated often. So, people, they come and take, come into the chambers as they did tonight, thinking the council is responsible for police activity. So, I always try to be a beacon of factual information. First and foremost, the, uh, the tax assessor has absolutely nothing to do with this action. The tax assessor only tells us what the assessment is, and even that, that department hasn't done. We've, we, we've outsourced that to a third-party, um, um, entity as well. The tax collector, on the other hand, who is responsible for signing this, did not say that they would not sign off. In fact, it is their, it is her, you know, obligation and her position. At once, she made, stated clearly, it's in the hands of the body. The body decides which way this goes, the administration does not decide. They could present a plan, as they often do. They present the plan to the council, and the council then decides which way the city goes. And then after, the mayor gets the luxury to sign off on it. And if he doesn't sign off on it, that means he doesn't, his concern of what the council has decided, um, is not there. But with that being said, um, we go through this all the time. The administration submits a plan, as they did, for example, in the sewer utility, and how that was rolled out. And then the council takes action to rescind, because that's the authority of the council. I'm gonna wrap soon, Madam Clerk. And when they fail to do so, it is the obligation and, and should be the, you know, it's within the purview of the council to bring forward plans. And Councilman, um, I'm sorry, Council President, often continues to say this. He says, "I come with solutions, I try to think of solutions." Well, I, I can outline a number of different solutions that are brought to the table, and this is another one. And the fact that just because it's the, an effort to block Councilman Jackson, I'm gonna tell you why it's concerning, because this administration has an obligation to the public. This is not for me. I'm not, I won't, I, I'll be able to put a, possibly a small flag on it to say, "I helped get this thing, you know, off the ground where it was blighted." But the people who have to live there, they're impacted by decisions that are made by people who are making decisions out of spite. That's an issue. That's an issue. When you're making decisions out of spite, personally, I said it should be sold for a dollar. Just like the house up on Belmont and North Eighth that's been vacant, I said it should be sold by a dollar to, you know, the, uh, men who stand up because they render so many services. But anyway, I'm not gonna labor that. I appreciate those of you who felt were, um, compelled enough to support this, not on behalf of me, but on behalf of the residents who have to travel that corridor every day, and more importantly, those that have to live there and at least make an effort to do something. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman, um, Councilman Velez?
All right, so, I think that, um, I'm listening to my colleagues, and I just heard the administration, what the plan to do. I think I will receive only one call, and it was, was one of my colleagues, Councilwoman Davila. And I even told her over the phone, real rude, I don't wanna even talk about this over the phone. I wanna hear, listen, my colleagues, correct, Councilwoman Davila? And, uh, because when it's not in the agenda, last time I was not here in the workshop, I had a leave, there was a conversation, and I have the chance to go and review the tape, um, to see what was the comments made. I read an article, um, and still, well, the respect of the media, whoever wrote the article, it didn't give me the right facts. It's like back and forth, it's like me listening to two devils and reading from two devils. It's like a competition since two thousand eighteen. And, and when I see this, it's created me a concern, where I gotta stand in a moment of difficulties and stress, et cetera, et cetera. So, I was reading this, and I like to read the little small lines on it. And I heard before, and I listened to my colleagues saying that, "Let's do this, and we could even sit down with them and tell them what to do there." There's a fine script that's here. Final resolution, authorized discount sales bid oh four oh six twenty-one Galaxy, no proposal is required. A hundred K minimum. So, they're not even obligated after they do whatever they wanna do, asking for what they're gonna do there. You know, the administration, I gotta wrap up, Madam Clerk, um, and Council President. You know, the administration, and I heard it today, that they say that they already started a process. And, um, and I have to be fair enough to say that everybody's blaming that nothing have been done with this property. But they blaming this administration, but what about the past administrations? They had this problem way before this administration. So, now, the administration, like Lita Di, like other properties around, probably, they taking action. And, um, I think, and I, and I have confidence, I'm the employee of the tax assessor office, and I gotta have, give the benefit of the doubt, the administration, and unless in May twenty-two, something is done with this property. Saying that, I was listening to two devil's eyes, I gotta take my shot on this to give a vote of confidence. My vote is no.
Your vote is?
No.
Thank you. Mr. President? So, let me just start off by saying that by this resolution getting four votes from our council colleagues, he says that it is a good initiative. It is. He puts a property that's not paying taxes back on the tax rolls. But the, the, the process, I don't feel comfortable with the process, because... because the job of the administration and Corporation Counsel is, anytime we trying to do an initiative, right? We need to, for the document to be, for the document, I'm sorry. I was a little distracted here. The, the document, basically, if, if you look at every item on this agenda, is, is approved as to the form and legality on the basis of facts set forth by Corporation Counsel. There was the question of the hundred thousand dollars, right? I recall speaking to the CFO, and I'm gonna take a little bit more than the two minutes, by the way. I, I recall speaking, when the CFO, when this was discussed, maybe two years ago, the CFO actually suggested that a private, not even a public sale, that a private sale could be done at the time. She suggested this, actually, in finance. And I think Councilwoman Davila was there. I don't know if you were there, Councilman Jackson, were you? No? I think, and it was the former, the former BA. And the reason she said that is because this property has been out there twice. Now, this is the concern that I have. Previous CFO and this administration. And by the way, their comment that because other administrations didn't do anything, it's unacceptable. I got elected three years ago to do things differently. If I got elected just to sit here and just go through my four years and not do anything, then I didn't run, I didn't run for office with the right intentions in mind, right? It's to try to make things better. And I've been asking, not for this property per se, I never mentioned this property at all, for any type of discussion with any member of this administration or any of my council colleagues. What I ask is, is that we have a whole bunch of properties in this city that are not paying taxes, and they're not owned by the city, that we need to foreclose on those properties, nothing to do with this one. But given that this one meets the same criteria, it's the same thing. Now, Corporation Counsel, a, a member of your staff in a conversation on Friday, and that's why I allow, you know, for this to go on after the hour and a half discussion that we had, that they were gonna do research, the tax collector, and your staff were gonna do research to see the legality on, on the, on the minimum amount. And that was not provided. I understand that the administration now is taking another action, but the administration cannot take that action without our approval. So that needs to be discussed also in finance. That has not been discussed at all in finance. So all I'm gonna say is, this is a, a good initiative, but it just doesn't have every resolution that I've, that I've ever entertained here in this council. I have asked the administration, I mean, the Corporation Counsel, to review and basically give me the green light as to it's, the legality. Sure.
Council President, I want to be clear, okay? The process that is outlined in this resolution is authorized by statute, should the council deem want to approve it. And I want to say that in fairness, okay? What's contained in this resolution isn't like some outside made-up legal construct. The statute is clear that this is one alternative to proceed. The administration has decided to pursue a different alternative, which the administration has decided would, in their view, generate greater income for Patterson. So to the extent that you're gonna vote, I don't want you to base your vote on a conclusion that le, that what is contained in this is illegal somehow.
I have, I have never, I have never said that.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
And, and I'm recorded, and I'm recorded. I've never said that in any way, contrary to what my, you know, council colleagues stated, because this is a public auction. Anyone could come in and bid on it, right? All, all I'm saying is, everything that we entertain here have to be approved by legal. That's why Councilwoman Davila and I asked for some action to be taken, and I don't mean to get off subject. There are some items, let me just leave it at that. There's some items that we requested. And legal gave us a, a legal opinion that we need to tweak it a little in order to proceed when it comes to illegal establishments here in the city of Patterson. And that's why we haven't moved. You know, I could put a resolution in place and make it sound very nice and, and let my colleagues act. But I need, I need the, the, the signature for Corporation Counsel, telling me that it's enforceable and, and that we could, it could be done. All I'm gonna say is, this is a good initiative. We need to start putting more properties on the tax rolls. Even if we pass this, I don't think the administration is gonna proceed with this. The tax collector have to proceed with this. The, the mayor's not gonna sign off on this, most likely. I need to hear more from the administration. This could always come back to us. We could always put this back on the floor. The problem that we have here is how reactive the administration was. We decide to do this, all of a sudden now we're having a foreclosure proceeding, but no discussion at all with the council. It was, you know, I was told that that was the intent. But I'm talking about in the committee format. I think that, that, that we need to have a conversation. After we have that conversation, we could always come back and revisit this. My vote is no at this time, but we could always come back to this.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is four in favor, five against. Item number thirty failed.
All right, so we're gonna take the first reading, um, ordinances.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is our first reading ordinance is item number one. For first reading, no public hearing is required. An ordinance amending Patterson chap, code chapter one, general provisions to provide for increased minimum and maximum fines for illegal dumping of solid waste pursuant to NJSA forty colon forty-nine dash five finance.
So move.
Second.
Roco, Madam Clerk.
Motion by Councilman Mendez, second by?
Cotton.
Councilman Cotton. Roll call on item number one for first reading, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So before my vote, I know, I know number one, number two, they're connected. And I want, I want to take this time to thank our, you know, Corporation Counsel for taking action on this initiative. That was my first hello when he arrived. You know, this was my request, you know, asking for a, a strong legislation to attack and fight against those people that are coming into our town and dumping garbage in every area. So we're not playing around with this legislation. This is gonna be something big, because the maximum amount that they're gonna have to pay is up to ten thousand dollars for those people that are coming into Patterson to dumping all the garbage around. And the minimum is gonna be two thousand five hundred. So I'm looking forward to, you know, per day, exactly, per day. So per days, which is something that, we're not gonna tolerate that. The city, you know, we're spending a lot of resources, a lot of taxpayer dollars from the department, through the Department of DPDW to pick up all those garbage, all those debris. And with that, we're gonna put a stop on that. So my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
It's a great initiative, council members, but I'm just questioning if it's gonna be enforced or not. Once again, my vote is yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number one is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. Number two, Mr. President?
Yes, yes, keep it going, roll.
Number two, Madam Clerk.
Yes, the next item is item number two for first reading. No public hearing is required. An ordinance amending Patterson code chapter four eighty-three, zoning and land development to provide for a definitions section and increase minimum and maximum fines for illegal dumping of solid waste finance.
So move.
Second. Roco.
Move by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Abdelaziz. Roco, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number two for first reading, Councilman Abdelaziz.
I heard all the discussion workshop. My vote is yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Great job.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number two is hereby adopted on second reading, I mean, on first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM.
Item number three, Madam Clerk?
Yes, the next item is item number three for first reading. No public hearing is required. An ordinance establishing a fifteen-minute parking zone in Eighteenth Avenue between East Thirty-eighth Street and East Thirty-first Street, Department of Public Works.
So move.
Second. Roco.
Move by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Roco, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number three for first reading, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number three is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM.
Number four, Madam Clerk?
Next item is item number four for first reading. No public hearing is required. An ordinance establishing always stop control intersection of Eleventh Avenue and East Thirty-eighth Street, Department of Public Works.
So move.
Second.
Move by Councilman Mendez, second by?
Cotton and Lucavillas.
Cotton and Lucavillas. Roco, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number four for first reading, Councilwoman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Finally, to all the third-world resident on Eleventh Avenue in East Thirty. We just, I understand Councilwoman Abdelaziz, but let me just say that we, we're on the first reading with this, and we're looking forward to moving to the second reading. And finally, we're gonna have control when it comes to Eleventh Avenue in East Thirty with a four-way stop control. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Villas?
I will leave my comment for the second reading. My vote is yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number four is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. Number five?
Item number five, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Next item is item number five for first reading. No public hearing is required. An ordinance establishing a commercial loading zone at Twelfth Avenue between Straight Street and Auburn Street, Department of Public Works.
So move.
Second.
Roco.
Councilman Mendez and Councilwoman Cotton, second?
Yes, Roco, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number five for first reading, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman? Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilman Villas?
Aye. Yes.
You said yes?
Twice.
Yes, I could understand your yes, Councilman. Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number five is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM.
Move to close.
Second.
Third. Move by, good job, Councilwoman Abdelaziz. Move by Councilwoman Abdelaziz, second by Councilman Villas.
Those are the motions I made, Council President.
Roco, Madam Clerk.
Announcement time.
Roll call to close the regular meeting of May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes, well, before I close, I just want to wish all my constituents that are celebrating Ramadan, wish you had a blessed Ramadan, and Eid Mubadiq on Thursday. To my council colleagues, if you, you know, if you want to visit a mosque, we'll be celebrating Eid on Thursday. And to my colleague Shane Kalik, Eid Mubadiq, to Amen, Eid Mubadiq, and to all the residents out there. Hope to see you guys on Thursday. My vote is yes. Good night.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, um, thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to make a few comments. I just want to say that coming this Saturday, there's quite a bit of events going on. We're gonna have the Patterson Kids and Occupying Barbara Park Association with Book Lunch in Bubbles. Saturday is gonna be, this Saturday coming at Barbara Park from twelve to two PM. Please, I think you must register first. So if you look on the website, Patterson Kids, and you'll see how to register. Also, I'm one of the women that's gonna be on the panel for Ruby Visions in partnership with The Amazing Help. We'll be hosting a career fair. And also, it's in honor of mental illness, and you heard me all night talk about mental illness. It's gonna be this Saturday coming at Wrigley Park, which is known as Montgomery Park. On Saturday, May fifteenth, from eleven AM to three PM. It's more like a career day. We have quite a few vendors there that will be helping. Anyone that would like to come out, please, just come in and join us as Ruby Visions in partnership with, is Ruby Clark and Kim. I'm not quite sure what Kim's last name is. Also, I would like to say to Cameo Black, I know it was, had been really rough out there, but I just want you to, please, just hang in there, and you know that you'll be able to call me. Also, to Mr. Coleman, you know, it's really a pleasure talking with him, and he is really concerned about the community and stuff. I just want to say too that Broadway, Madam Clerk, I mean, BA, Corporation Counsel on the Broadway next to the old unemployment office, DPW was over there maybe two months ago. It took, they took two dumpsters out of there. They have literally built a shack that you can see driving down Broadway. It's filthy. I reported it about a month ago, and they slowly built it. And I had asked DPW, no, I asked Community Improvement to please contact the owner. If he would just fix the fence, then it would be very difficult. But if you can send someone over there and see exactly what, what I'm talking about, it's Lily, and it was before you couldn't see it, but now it's up and you can, you can clearly, clearly see it. I just want to say that a very good friend, Sharonda Roberts, was one of the victims, was one of the houses in the fire on Temple Street. She lost everything, and I told her that she has community people that's gonna be helping her to get established again. But she has an event called the Shower Event, which would be held May twenty-ninth to June sixth. And I know that all of you out there that want to help donate or help her with this, this would be her fourth annual Shower Event. And we must do us, do our best as a community to come together to, to help her to still, she's gonna still move forward with it. I want you to keep her, her and her family in prayer, so they can get back on their feet with the, what happened with them. But she continue, she will continue with her fourth annual Shower Event, which would be May twenty-ninth. The Shower Event is gonna take place on Straight Street and Ellison Street, which will be using the Els Lodge and the American Temple, American Lodge parking lot that they have on Ellison Street. I just want to say also to, I have a young lady, well, I have a friend called Ms. Gloria Hallelujah. And her son passed away. I think the funeral's gonna be Sunday, but I had the opportunity to talk with her. And, and she was telling me the story, he was in Philadelphia. They had to take him to a special hospital, because when he was born, he was born with half a heart. So if anybody know Ms. Gloria Hallelujah, she sang back in the day with, with some of the, the old-school songs that we know. So her son's funeral is gonna be Sunday. It's gonna be at four o'clock. It's gonna be at Bible Way Church on South Orange Street. So if you're gonna make, come out and make up. Ms. Gloria Hallelujah, and that's her name, Gloria Hallelujah, will be, I've seen her in the community. She, she picks up food, she deliver food, she, she calls me all the time. So please keep her in prayer, and her son's funeral is gonna be Saturday. Also, I just want to say too that I know you heard me talk tonight about the food pantries and all that. And let me tell you, if I'm out there, and you know, they said, and I'm gonna do my best to find out as much as I can find out. But I know for a fact that the grandparents give out over fifteen, they serve, service over fifteen hundred people a week. I know for a fact that Jumpstarts serves over three hundred people a week. You know, to me, something goes, for funding not to be able to come through there, I'm not gonna, what's gonna happen to those people in that community? I talked about mental illness, I talked about all of that. But I want to say that I've been here for eight years. I've seen where they put money in contingency, and they decide later on on how they can move, move it forward to somewhere else. It's been done in contingency. So this was not new. TV Land, I want to say, God bless you out there. Please reach out to me as the councilwoman for anything that you need to move forward. I can do what I can. And I just want to say that, and even we have Mr. Warren Ellison, six oh one. six oh one East Eighteenth Street complaining about the potholes. You know, we had regainer races, and talking about grassroots programs, you know. You know, Dorothy Clark talking about how the city is, and so I just want to say, Elvis, if you go to Elvis page, he posts everything that's going on. TV Land, everyone, Madam Clerk, my secretary, Sophia over there, the BA, CFO, Corporation Council, you out there, TV Land, please have a good night. God bless you all, thank you. Madam Clerk? My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I'll be brief, but definitely, let me just take this time before my vote to, I would like to thanks to all the third-world residents for being so active and sending me those texts with every time there's a problem around the third war, and sometime and out of the third war, I get those texts through WhatsApp, through, you know, my Facebook account, and I'm just trying to be on top of all what's going on, and just try to bring some solution to the problem that affecting our community, just utilizing this position. We all, you know, we're all elected with a purpose, and my goal and my purpose is to serve our community and definitely be part of the change. You know, so, but with that being said, to all the residents that live around Eleventh Avenue and East Thirty, you know, through the whole year, been listening about the concern and all the accident in that area, you hear this, we went to first reading for the four-way stop sign, and also, very excited about this legislation about to stop people coming into the city of Patterson and dumping construction garbage and all kind of debris with no respect to our community. I'm definitely looking forward to vote on second reading and making sure that the administration enforce this piece of legislation, because if you think about, if you look at the amount of money and resources, or taxpayer dollar that we're spending by cleaning all the garbage and the debris that people are coming into our city and throwing, it just, it just so unacceptable. And Madam BA, at the last forum that I have to the third-world resident, we came out with a good, great idea, and I expressed it to you, and it was about to fix a problem that we have with recycling. Recycling still been a big problem in the third war, and in the entire city of Patterson. Yesterday was, they could, yesterday, they only have three truck out, and I know that it's because of the lack of personnel, they need more staff, and I bring the idea of a staffing agency, I don't know if you, if the administration's looking to that, if you're moving forward with that, but please, you know, let's have a conversation, and I'll give you a call tomorrow, and see if you have some time, because I would like to hear from you about that idea. It's definitely work, a lot of the company, they're using staff, those staffing agency to cover the people that are, you know, not coming into, you know, we need those fourteen people in the back of the truck, two per truck, seven driver. If we don't have the staff, we're not gonna be able to provide the services to the community. And it's been a big problem in the third war, I've been getting those call, and I'm encouraging the resident to leave the recycling outside, because they have to pass the next day and cover the route, but that's not the solution. The solution is to make sure that the administration get the staff that they need. So, let's talk about that, and I hope that the administration implement that, you know. And last but not least, I would like to invite the community, this May twenty-second, at East Side Park, by the Gazebu, I have the Hotown County Latino Foundation, we're gonna be helping the resident of the city of Patterson with the home energy program assistance, so we're gonna be helping the community to apply to those funding that expires in June. So, May twenty-second, at twelve PM, we're gonna be at East Side Park, it's outside, Kobe Free, stop by, we're gonna have two program. We're gonna have a ESL Distribution Program, and also, I'm gonna have this Energy Assistance Program, we're gonna fill it up, the application, we're gonna do all the work. If you bring all the document that we need, so I'll put it on my social media page, and next week, I will remind the community the document that you need to bring in order for us to help you apply for that pending bill that you have from PNCNG, and also, a continue assisting into the payment of your electricity bill. So, with that being said, let's keep our Palestinian brothers and sisters in our prayer with all the things that have been going on, please, let's keep praying, and hope that, you know, God bring peace to our brothers and sister in Palestine. So, my vote is yes, good night, Patterson.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Velez?
Thank you, Councilman, Madam Clerk. First of all and foremost, I just want to congratulate Team Percy for the landslide winning this election. Councilman Garcia, Councilman Love, and Councilwoman Schraft, and also the great Mayor Percy, congratulation in your winning of your election today, landslide, sister city. You know, somebody's timing out there, so I had to be quick. You know, the fifth-world residents that came today, we have heard your concerns. I spoke to the administration, especially Mrs. Zella, regarding some one or two light poles on Marcus Street side that are out, and they will be working on that as soon as possible. You know, today, I put Evandetta from the Palestinian community, from Palestine, in front of my desk, because when they hurt, we all hurt. You know, my heart goes to those individuals and family that have lost a member in this senseless situation over there in the Middle East, so my heart goes to the Palestinian community locally, also overseas. You know, and I want to read this before I finish tonight. And this was my post this morning on Facebook. Our ancestors taught us that community should always be united, that there is no gold or silver or jewelry that separate us. The unity is to link our differences, cultures, and to live in equity and with tolerance. We can make the best of each and learn to be better people every day. Remember always to be united as a community. Have a good night. This morning, I say have a good day, and I think today had been a good day. We have been proactive and balanced, not the opinion of the outsiders, based on the opinion and the facts that was presented in the council meeting today. So, God bless you all, stay safe, make sure that you get vaccinated and use any, you know, Moderna, Pfizer, or Johnson and Johnson, and make sure you do, take a COVID test before you get vaccinated, or any dose out there. Stay safe. If you go to Mr. Alex Mandevan, make sure you use, wear your mask, social distancing, and wash your hands, and make sure that you don't use no kind of gossip in event. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mr. President?
So, I want to congratulate our DPW director, I think it's his birthday today. I'm surprised none of the council members remember, usually on point with birthdays. Well, like Russell Simmons used to close his shows, I'm gonna modify it a little. Thank you for watching, God bless you, good night. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is six in favor, three absent. The regular meeting of May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one is hereby closed. Good night, everyone, and thank you very much.